Good evening. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of December 4th, 2025. If everyone will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for starting late. We just ran into some technical difficulties. Let's see, we'll do roll call. Jim Bonanos here, Phil Nemisak.
Present.
Lauren Goodrich is not here. Joseph Urbino.
Present.
And Michael Fortuno could not be here tonight. Do we have October 23rd Planning Board meetings? Yes, we do, right?
I do not have the, I was unable to finish the complete transcript, so we'll push that off.
Yep, we'll defer that to the next meeting, the 23rd. Let's see, so the following applications will not be heard tonight and have been adjourned. That's application 2315 Sal's Market and Pizzeria, 25-655 Green Meadow Road, application 2117, that's 15 Takahao Avenue subdivision, 25-56 LT Eastchester, LCL Equinox, 750 White Plains Road, and application 2518 210 Marbledale subdivision. Those are adjourned. Just quickly, the items we are going to go over tonight are, we're going to just do an administrative task on application 2401, that's 42 Maple, followed by 25-39 305 White Plains Road, followed by 2568 Great Day Family Childcare, and then we'll do 249 Main Street, 2538 Simon R. Country Club, 24-2534 Water Street, that's the Reglano subdivision. Then we'll do 10 Sage Place, application 25-44 62 Brambach, followed by 4 N Place, and then the last one will be 25-43 3 Hanfling Road. So as usual, we have a lot of applications, so we'd like to get through these as expeditiously as possible. So when you come out, please be concise as best you can, and if someone's made comments similar to what you made previously, please sort of confine your comments to new information so we all can get a chance to talk. I think we're going to try and do a hard stop around 10 o'clock, so we should have enough time to go over everything. So the first application, oh, the first is the administrative item, and that is, we just need a 90-day extension on something we've already approved here, so this is just, we're going to make a motion, so everyone stay where they are. And that is for application 2401, 42 Maple Avenue subdivision. So I make a motion to grant a second, a second 90-day extension of the conditional preliminary final subdivision approval for application 2401, 42 Maple Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. The first application, application we're actually doing is 305 White Plains Road, that's application 25-39.
Good evening. Jonathan Villani of Niziana Villani Design Consultants, representing the owner of 305 White Plains Road. We presented to the Planning Board a couple of months ago. We resolved some issues that were addressed, were brought up by the Town, by the Planning Board, as well as Ms. Wolfson. We addressed those, and we're referred to the ARB. We presented to the ARB last month, and there were only a couple of concerns that they had, which we're here to address tonight, which is the matching of the brick that's presently on the building. So I brought samples for, we brought bricks that are presently there now, as well as samples of bricks that we'll be using to match. There was also a concern of what particular sign would be fraud on the building, so it was requested by the ARB to take any initiation of the sign on the building to take it off, so that we'll present that as a separate application to the signing board. So pretty, there was pretty much the only two issues that were presented by the ARB when we presented last month. Besides that, we've resolved all issues as far as concerns with the site, retaining wall, parking, the alterations to the basement, the alterations to the first floor. We did put drainage on the drawings. We will develop them further as far as size and what type of drainage we'd be putting underneath the basement slab with the building apartment in Carlo. But besides that, the only aesthetic concerns from the ARB were the brick matching, as well as the, taking a separate application for the sign.
Great. I didn't even recognize the application, it looks so good. No, that's, that's, that's exactly what we wanted to see, and that's all we're concerned. But we're matching brick, there's no new brick, or?
There's existing brick on the front facade, and the whole side of the building will be new brick to match. So went to Casa Absolene Elmsford, and this is the brick, and this is the matching brick. You want me to bring it up, or you?
Yes, yes, we want to see this brick. You brought it, yeah.
They were pretty adamant about it in the ARB, so I'd rather.
Better bring it, and we'll look at it. Are these going to be full brick, or half brick?
They sell them both ways. We have to do full brick to match the elevation, we'll do full brick, but they make them both ways. That's why it was easier to carry that than...
But they are going to be on different elevations, so...
Yes. They'll be, well, they kind of wrap the corner, so this is where all the existing brick is, this is all new.
Okay. No, it looks very good.
Thank you.
And I guess, any of the other concerns we had previously were about parking and all that kind of stuff.
We're about parking, right. We talked about the parking layout the last time. We, the applicant met with the building inspector, and he was comfortable with the parking layout. We talked about the railing above the retaining wall. We talked about adding a new retaining wall where the current opening in like the alleyway is, and that is shown on the site plan. We talked about the drainage, which is now shown on the site plan, so that just needs to be a little bit more specified about the size of the cul-de-sac, so all those things have been taken care of.
That was the missing piece, the one we wanted to see the most.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm okay with it. I think it looks very good. We could get down this, the netting quick.
Yes, as soon as possible.
Holiday, that would be a nice holiday gift to get down.
As soon as possible.
Good. So then, I don't have any questions. This is an open public hearing, so don't go anywhere. If there's any comments on the application from the public, please come forward. This is the old shop right opposite Cornell's. No. So then I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, 25-39 305 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. You have a list of conditions?
Yeah, I just have a few conditions for consideration as a part of any approval motion. The first would be a condition to satisfy prior to the issuance of a building permit, and that would be to specify the size of the cul-de-sac units proposed to be installed under the parking area. Our general condition about the applicant shall pay all outstanding application fees, if there are any, in full. Third condition, ongoing condition would be that the brick to be installed in the rear of the building shall match the brick in the front. It was something the Architectural Review Board spent a lot of time on. And then our typical condition that this approval authorizes the applicant to undertake only the activities specifically designated on the project plans in accordance with the resolution, and any changes require further approval from the board.
Okay. So, subject to those conditions, I make a motion to approve 25-39 305 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Looks good. The next application, as I said, is 2568 Great Day Family Childcare.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Board, Mr. Chudusko, Ms. Wolfson, Dr. Greeley. My name is Lucia Kyokyo with Cuddy &amp; Fader, and we represent the applicant pitching in tonight for my colleague Max Mahalik, who you saw last month. Max is actually receiving an award tonight, so we thought that that was probably more favorable for him to be at the award ceremony than at the meeting tonight.
What's he receiving an award for?
I'm sorry?
What's he receiving the award for?
The Land Use Law Center at Pace is issuing an award for a promising new attorney, I believe that's...
I second that.
He was trying to figure out how he could do both, come to this and go to the award ceremony, but we decided to give him the night off.
Thank you.
I'm joined tonight by the project team professionals, Wyatt Gerber and Elaine Dew from AKRF, and Patrick Walsh from Peter F. Gato Associates, who are the architects of the project. We're seeking to establish an intermittent daycare on the lower level of 32 Horny Road. We'd be seeking site plan approval from this board, as well as special use permit approval and approval of a parking plan from the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to start with a very brief overview, and then turn it over to the project professionals to talk about our supplemental submission, in which we addressed comments by the Planning Board at the last meeting, Town Staff and Town Consultants. So the proposal is for the carrying of 15 children, and that's a cap. That's a maximum number for this proposal, which is about 10 less than it's permitted for the intermittent daycare and the zoning law. Three daily employees will be present. One of those employees will actually live at 32 Horny Road. The daycare would operate from 7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. There are two secure play areas provided, and we'll talk a little bit about how those were updated since our last meeting. No changes to the footprint of the home or the structure are proposed. The applicant does have experience with running a daycare, as they operate one in New Rochelle. You can hear a little bit about the traffic data that was collected at that location. And just to keep in mind that this lower level where the daycare is proposed was used as a doctor's office since about the 1960s, and also noting that there is another daycare nearby at 10 Alcamond Avenue. So I'm going to turn it over to Patrick Walsh, who will talk about the changes to the site plan. And Patrick also has a drawing that wasn't submitted yet. It's a detail of the coverage calculations, and we, he prepared that in response to the comments about being able to recreate those numbers. So we will submit that, but we thought it would be helpful just to show it tonight.
Sure.
So I'll begin by saying the changes to the site plan. I think the main concerns were coverage, impervious coverage of the site, which we've increased grass areas for the playgrounds. We've reduced amount of paving around the site, right? I think some of the other questions were about the fencing around the playgrounds themselves. We've changed that to a, it's a vinyl-covered black fencing to secure the playgrounds from the parking lot and the street. Okay, what do you have there?
Sure, the travel locations.
So, hang on, before you continue, could you just point out what has changed on the site plan, or what the new impervious are, or what it is recalculating?
On the site plan, showing the access to the playgrounds for the children from the building, are indicated in red here. We've increased the size of this playground, and we show the access to that playground. Again, we've reduced the amount of paving in the area here for the playground. There's going to be no apparatus or any type, any permanent apparatus. It's pretty much just going to be grass area.
Sure. So when you flip to the new, I'm going to see more and less, right? More at the bottom right?
We just reduced the amount of paving here.
Oh, right.
And I think we pushed it out maybe a foot, just to give additional clearance.
All right. Can we see the new one there?
And do I just show one of the plan? This is another plan we generated, showing the existing coverage, impervious versus the proposed, again by removing amount of paving area along the portions here, here. We've decreased the numbers significantly, but from 4,200 down to 4,100.
Do that again, so that's impervious?
Impervious. 4,126 is the number.
26 is the number, and it was 4,126.
4,126, yeah. And what was it?
4,210.
That's impervious.
Impervious.
And was there a change, there was a change in the pervious also?
I, we, well, we removed pervious, again, the paving.
Right. And what did that go from and to?
4,210 down to 4,126. Are there any other questions?
So the change in pervious is kind of insignificant, well, it's whatever.
2%.
85 feet, or whatever it turns out to be. Does there have to be a change in drainage plans for an increase in pervious, even if a small amount?
It would depend upon what is proposed, but here I think we have a decrease.
We have a decrease.
Yeah.
It's a decrease of about 2% from existing, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's definitely not getting any worse. That's the important piece.
So, just so we know, I think the whole site plan that you have on the back explains the overall usage or function of that, of the, of the school. Can we see that, or does someone else want to present that? I guess your numbers are exactly what you just said, and you're just about done, right? Yeah, that's it.
Well, this is the ground floor, which will serve as, as the daycare with the residents above.
Right.
So several rooms, again, for different, different groups of children.
Sure.
I guess they move throughout.
And the play areas are those that are marked?
Yes, we have a play area back here. Accessible through this end of the house.
Sure.
And then we did a lower playground.
So can you give us some overall, I know we talked about square foot, what are some overall dimensions of the one on the left? That's a square, so what's this, two dimensions?
24 by 25 feet.
Okay, and the other one?
Roughly nine and a half feet by 35 feet.
And you're saying there's no play equipment on either one? They're just open, sir?
I, I think the, the plan is to have, you know, seasonal play equipment, but nothing permanent, no play apparatus, no swing sets.
On either one, okay. And you explained how they get to the one on the left. The one on the bottom, they just exit, the one on the bottom right, that?
Yes.
They just exit right out over there.
Yes. And that is all enclosed, so when you enter, you come through the gate here, through this entrance?
Okay. All right.
Can you explain the fencing again? How tall is it, and what is the look of it?
She'll be four feet tall.
Four feet, okay.
A black vinyl coated chain link fence.
Okay.
Without swinging gates in the flow direction.
So chain link would be, the visibility would be allowed, so what do you have in front of it? On the L one, it looks like you have tree coverage or bush coverage all throughout?
We have some tree, some bushes, existing trees.
And then on the other side?
We have some existing trees. There's presently a shed in the area.
Okay, that, that's, okay, I see now. And then I guess it continues, it surpasses through the driveway?
Yes, it continues through and then ends into a retaining wall.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Yeah, there's a retaining wall in that, the play area, the square shaped play area is up some steps.
And then there's another retaining wall at the back of the playground.
Oh, got it. So then there's a rear exit to the, on the square side, there's also like a rear exit with those pavers in the back?
This is actually an egress from the residence.
Got it.
The upper level of the residence, exits out this way and...
Okay. Thanks.
Through the playground.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'll turn it over to Wyatt and Elaine, and they have a video presentation, as well as an update on the traffic analysis.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Wyatt Gerber. I'm the traffic engineer from AKRF, and I'm joined here tonight by my colleague Elaine Dew, PE, Senior Technical Director, and we're just going to touch upon what we've done differently and updated from our traffic analysis to try and answer the board's questions, the public's comments and questions, as well as Collier's review memo dated November 26, 2025. So the first thing that we did was updated the trip generation estimates to try and conform with the most up-to-date ITE Handbook Edition, which is the 12th edition, and that shows that our project would not have any significant traffic impacts on the adjacent roadway networks in comparison to the 11th edition. And those results do not change whether you include or exclude carpooling. Now, we also counted the pickups and the drop-offs as requested at the existing and operational daycare that's in New Rochelle, and we counted from Monday, November 10, 2025, until Friday, November 14, 25. The count showed that the existing operations of that new Rochelle daycare actually are less intense than what the ITE results would suggest. Now, in terms of the existing operations of the intersection, especially as it relates to queuing at that Downer Avenue driveway and the Downer Avenue approach, we conducted supplementary observations on Friday, November 14, 2025, to try and get an idea if there were any potential traffic impacts as it relates to the Galloway's Bakery that's right around the corner from the site. Based on those observations, the intersection operated similarly to our previous conducted observations, and we saw a maximum queue of four vehicles along Downer Avenue that was cleared quickly within one cycle. Now, these observations have been pretty similar that we've previously attested to, but tonight we prepared a couple of videos to try and show what the intersection actually looks like as it operates, and both of the videos are kind of positioned to show that Downer Avenue approach, so you can clearly see the queue there, and they're both taken from the same day. It's our Wednesday, May 7, 2025 counts, and we have two videos. The first one right here is the AM time period, so that's the drop-off time period, and it's from 7:30 a.m. until 8:30 a.m., and you can clearly see that there's not a lot of traffic on that northbound and the southbound side, looking at Scarsdale/Downer. So even though there's a lot of traffic on Horny, there's really not a lot of action going on on Downer. You can wait and see, but there weren't a lot of times in which there was a lot of traffic. Now, we paid particular attention to the number of vehicles that were actually along that Downer Avenue approach, because it only takes three cars before the driveway is partially blocked. And then obviously, it takes more than three cars for it to be fully blocked. And we essentially counted any single time in which there were three or more as the driveway being fully blocked, just to make sure it was conservative, and we can keep on going here, but if we scrub through this video, we'll only...
When is this video from?
This is from Wednesday, May 7, 2025, when we conducted our original counts at the intersection.
Okay.
And we're facing Downer, just to reiterate that. Now, we could scrub through the video. In the AM, this first video, there was only one time in which there were three or more vehicles at that enters, at the Downer Avenue approach, and it was three. So it was only partially blocked, and it cleared within just a few seconds.
What was the timeframe?
See, right here, the vehicles come over here, and that's about 8:26, so 8:00 a.m., 26 seconds in, and it occurred until about 8:00 a.m., 38 seconds, so that's about 12 seconds. We can watch it here, it's a little sped up, so it won't take 12 seconds to watch. There you go, and now it's fully cleared, they didn't have to wait too long, and you can see that there's no more cars coming along there. So if we move on to the next video, that's the PM timeframe, that's that pickup timeframe from 5:30 p.m. until 6:30 p.m., or sorry, 5:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m., we could see that there's a little bit more traffic that's going along Downer, as we'll unpause here in a second, but unlike the AM time period, there were a few more times in this video in which there were at least three cars along the Downer Avenue approach. It only happened a handful of times, and in each time, it was blocked for only a few seconds before people were able to fully clear. We'll kind of wait and see here. You could see that there's a lot of traffic around Horny, but there really isn't a lot of action going on at Downer. As soon as that light is able to turn green, you could see the Horny traffic completely clears, and then everyone on Downer is able to start moving as well. And otherwise, besides the few times when there are people there, there's really no, no one there at all. And if we keep on scrubbing through the video, again, like I said, there's a few times when there's a couple cars there, but there was one time towards the end of the timeframe when it was blocked for a little over a minute. And the reason why this happened is because people got there right when their light turned red, so they had to just wait one cycle before their light turned green again and they can go. We'll see as Elaine is helping out going towards that time.
Is this a dynamic traffic light, or is it just a fixed time?
So it's...
Does that time change during the day?
It's just fixed, it was only here during the count periods, and it wasn't outside of that.
Say, say that to me in English?
Yeah. The video was only taken while we were conducting counts, so it wasn't outside of that. It wasn't taken outside of those time frames.
Okay, so you can just answer to the time periods within which you took the video?
Correct. And more specifically, these are the time periods that had the peak hours, so this was when we had the most amount of traffic that we saw. We didn't want to take a timeframe when there was nothing going on for, you know, an hour or two. We wanted to show something going on. And then I think Elaine can speak a little bit more on that as well.
Yeah, well, also, giving us, giving us like noon traffic isn't going to really help us for our analysis.
Yeah, so just to add on what Wyatt is saying, Elaine Dew, for the record, professional engineer and senior technical director with AKRF. Wyatt, we have these traffic counts in these videos, and in addition to these, Wyatt himself actually went out to the intersection back in May. He did observations. We also had another staff member do observations on a separate day, and Wyatt also did observations this past November at the same location, and at each time, he only saw, very, very rarely, and only for a few seconds at a time, was the driveway on Downer actually blocked. I hope that answers your question.
Well, he kind of said the same thing, didn't he?
Sorry.
What you just said was more or less rephrasing what he's already presented, right? That the blockage is a minor.
Sorry, I'm having issues hearing.
So what you just told us is pretty much similar to what he told us before you got up there, correct?
Yes, and I'm just reiterating that it's not just in these videos that we're seeing it, but also over multiple periods that we've observed it in person.
What is, what is the number of average-sized vehicles until it blocks the driveway? You said three?
Yeah, that would be three cars before it's partially blocked, and then anything over three, it begins to get fully blocked.
Before, okay, so three doesn't block it at all, or are you saying?
No, it does partially block it, but it won't fully block it. Really, the point of the video was just, just to show what I've been talking about and how there's very little traffic going on, and every time we've been out there, it's been a very similar picture, where there's not a lot of times when it's being blocked or partially blocked, and when it is, it's cleared very quickly.
Okay, and if, I'm hearing the two of you collectively, that there were three separate viewings, two by yourself, Mr. Gerber, and one by a colleague?
That's correct.
All on three separate days, one on May 7, which is recorded here, another in November, which you personally...
Correct, November 14.
14, yes. And then there was a colleague of yours that made observations, which, I don't know if those were recorded anywhere, but, or whether they were just sort of a gut check, or, you know, are you seeing anything differently?
We, we had notes, and those are in the previous traffic report that we submitted.
Got it.
So they were able to make... So they were able to make it into that. Really, we just wanted to show, oh.
Yeah, I wanted to. The last time the application was before the board, I raised an issue in terms of the traffic signal at that spot where your people are coming off of the Bronx River, you've got Harney Road, there is traffic going up Downer. The parking area where the drop-off and pickup is going to occur is three spots in total, one of them is a handicap spot, correct?
Yes.
My concern with the traffic in terms of the condition is that the application calls for clusters of drop-off and pickup vehicles in the morning and in the evening. And I'm assuming that, you know, approximately the same time, you're going to have between 10 and 15 cars either dropping off or picking up children. Initially, we had asked a question about the line of cars backing up, waiting to get in to bring the children into the center or in picking them up, and that could cause a backup into that intersection. This study, even if it is, you know, brief timeframes, you are also talking about an added condition where that driveway could be blocked, which could potentially exacerbate that concern about cars backing up into the intersection, waiting to drop off or pick up. Have you done any type of research or to address that? Because that's really the concern of the, one of the main concerns of the board in terms of the safety of that drop-off and pickup location.
Yeah, and that's a valid concern. We wanted to make sure that the operations are conducted safely and efficiently. And the applicant has agreed to do a few things here. So the first thing that the applicant will agree to do is stagger the pickup and drop-off time periods, and that would be three vehicles every 15 minutes. And so that number would be the number of cars that is able to be fit into that Downer Avenue driveway anyway. So there would be three cars every 15 minutes, and because of that maximum of 15 students that are allowed there, that would be, over the course of 75 minutes, would be that pickup and drop-off time period. The second thing that the applicant has agreed to do is to have a staff member located outside, near that Downer Avenue driveway, to help assist in parents bringing in their kids and help them enter and exit the driveway safely. And then there's one more thing, which the applicant will also agree, to prune and clear vegetation that's in the property extents, especially near the Downer Avenue driveway, to make sure that people have plenty of available distance to see down the road and back out safely. So if there's any instance in which there's something going on where people are taking a little bit too long, dropping off their kids, and to make sure that they're not taking too long, that staff member can help assist them in saying, hey, it's time to go. And so with those measures, we don't anticipate there to be any impacts in the area and for everything to be handled safely and efficiently.
So, thank you for pointing that out, but I'm not so sure we agree with those three points. And we'll talk to our consultant in particular, because staggering, I'm not sure it's enforceable. It means someone in the city has to, someone in the town has to go out and make sure.
Let me ask a question. Is there a financial, how is the childcare paid for? First of all, what are the ages again of the children who are going to be there?
I'm going to let the attorney handle that, because that's out of my purview.
Well, hang on. Can I ask my questions? So you're going to, yeah.
Yeah, well, we actually talked.
You're the right person. Good. So staggering is a good idea. I'm not so sure it's something the town can enforce. And if it's not, I just don't think it's manageable, although you're saying it is. If it's not, then this doesn't work. So although you're advocating for it, I'm not sure we're going to accept that as a.
And I think it's a good idea, but it sounds like it's aspirational unless there's a financial penalty associated with it. If you're paying by the minute and you get there, well, if you're fined if you're there late, maybe there's more of an incentive to comply.
And that's exactly what we talked about, because we understand it. It needs to be enforced, right? So first of all, it would be part of the contract that if a family wants to sign up with this daycare center, this is your 15-minute pickup block, this is your 15-minute drop-off block, and there will be penalties if they don't adhere to those. So there is an incentive for them to stick to that. And as Wyatt said, the staff will be there to monitor it. One of the other things they do have to do is make sure they record when the kids are dropped off, their name, who they are, and they'll agree to keep track of the timing, to make sure this is all working. As Wyatt said, they want to make sure it's safe for their, for their kids, so this is, this is how they can do that and enforce it. And, you know, they've got experience with this, so there are ways to make sure that this is, this works out.
Right. I could still be skeptical.
I'm sorry?
I can still be skeptical. Although what you said makes perfect sense, I'm not sure it's going to work out the way you propose, so.
Yeah, and.
Be that as it may.
When I go to church, it's always the families with the little kids that get in late, because even though they have the best intention of getting there in time, it's always the little kid who's ornery that day.
Yeah, well, it, like I said, it's something that they'll have to agree to.
Point number two, a staff member directing traffic and getting people in and out seems also aspirational. Like, we don't want anyone walking out into the roadway to stop traffic till their car's in and out. That's danger. So I can't believe that someone on your staff is going to go out and really make a difference as to who's where and what time. Do they have a whistle? Do they have flags? What are they going to do? They're not trained at guiding cars around.
I don't think it's someone out in the middle of the road. I think it's someone there in the drop-off/pickup area, making sure that, you know, things are, things are moving.
So just as a point, I was at Costco once, and there was a staff member out there directing traffic. The cars just crashed into each other. I mean, it's kind of what happens. Maybe he wasn't good at it. I don't know, but it happens, right?
Costco's a little different than, you know, and it's 15 minutes, and it's three, three kids in 15 minutes.
What are the ages again of the children who would be enrolled in this daycare?
I'm sorry?
The ages of the children who would be enrolled? What's the youngest?
Yeah, I believe it's, I'll have to check with you on that. I'm sorry. I'll have to get back to you on that.
My belief is that we're dealing with probably very small children, and I know this has been raised before by the public, that you just don't snatch an 18-month out of a backseat. And, you know, they need that parting time as a parent, albeit of much older children than that. I remember those days.
And we can look at the New Rochelle location and provide some data on that, just to get a sense of, you know, how long does it really take to have the drop-off at certain age groups? Same with the pickup.
I visited the location, not the actual building on Clove Street in New Rochelle, which is a very different topography, a very different wider street, a flat street, not nearly as busy a street as I can tell. It is next to the high school, so I don't know that, you know, I didn't visit it during a school day. But just to get the lay of the land, that Clove Street facility is sufficiently distinct from this location, where it would not inherently have many of the problems that this location presents.
Yeah, I understand that, but I think it'd be helpful just to get a sense of, you know, is this 15-minute increment, you know, is it feasible? And we can certainly explore that a little bit more. And, look, the applicant is willing to shift that. There are ways to, you know, adjust that and enforce it.
Yeah, I think we can all agree that having all 15 come at once is completely.
No, no one, yeah.
Bad shit.
No, no one wants that. No.
Just to draw options for them to lay on the table, at least increasing it to 30 minutes, or maybe you could only have slots that, you know, the 8:00 AM window, you can only have, you know, five or six, and you have a 7:00 AM window. If you can't get enough business to fill in those slots, then, you know, just to strategize something like that where the 8:00 AM window is only limited to six. But I don't know how that gets enforced anyway, so.
Mr. Chairman, there's a couple of things I wanted to raise. I think that while it is a very good idea to have a staggered drop-off and pickup, I think that what we may find is that the parents' inclination to drop off their children, regardless of an agreement, is going to depend a lot on the train schedules and them getting there at a certain time. And I think that even if there is a, a drop-off and pickup that is staggered, there are parents that may get there earlier. If it's not their designated time, they may kind of loiter nearby and wait for their time, which could add to the congestion. I think the only way that this is somewhat enforceable is if the Eastchester Police Department was out there at certain times and assisting in directing and making a continuous flow of traffic with the assistance of an employee. I don't think this is something that's going to be directable by an employee, a civilian, so to speak. And I wonder, has the Eastchester Police Department weighed in on this at all?
Probably not.
Not that, yeah, not that I'm aware of, but we can certainly have to.
Because we've never proposed that. It's always been working with the applicant to come up with something that might work without the police department getting in.
I understand. I'm just curious.
The other recommend, sorry to interrupt, the other recommendation that Dr. Gurley had provided was some post-operational monitoring, right? And as I said earlier, they do have to record when the children arrive and what time they arrive. So they're willing to do that and work with AKRF to make sure that this is working and making sure that it's, the staggering is working. And if they have an issue, I mean, like I said, the contract is, this is your, this is your time. If it doesn't work with your schedule, maybe this is not the place for you. Yeah, you know, like, our client does not want to have a safety issue. They do not want to have traffic backed up. It's not good for them. It's not good for the kids. It's not good for the parents. So they're willing to work with the town and come up with a schedule and enforce it.
Sorry, is the 15 students, that's full-time, or are they looking into doing half in the morning, half in the afternoon? It's 15 for the full day?
So, yes. So the maximum number of children they'll have is 15. That's, it's not going to be any more than that. So they're thinking three in 15-minute intervals, because there are three spaces there. Maybe they can build in a cushion of five minutes between the intervals, right? So that way, you have a little bit of a cushion, you know, and that way, look, if someone's running a little late or someone gets there a little early, you still have that cushion there. And it's not, it's not 15 cars or 10 cars all at once. It's three.
Three?
And I think Mr. Rubino.
Three if you stagger.
I'm sorry?
Three if you stagger.
Yes, yeah, no. And the proposal is to stagger.
I'm not, if staggering is a game changer, then I don't really know how this is going to work, because again, I'm not quite sure staggering is going to work. Even if you tell your people who are using your facility that they have to come to a certain time, I can't see the operator of the care facility turning away clients and losing money. They want to make their people come in. What's the, and how are we going to enforce that?
Well, that's where the penalty comes in.
Well, I understand, but you're not going to penalize someone that's paying your rent. You're going to accommodate them. I can't see them telling three clients that they can't come anymore because they didn't pick up their kids on time, although you're saying you can. I honestly don't see that happening.
Well, it depends how you set up the contract.
Yeah, contracts are great. It's better when you don't need a contract and people just do what they're supposed to.
I also think it's, look, I, we get it. Sometimes you're late, sometimes you're early. I don't, if someone's a repeat offender here and is causing problems, there's ways to deal with that. But you would hope that a lot of people understand that that's, that's what they signed up for.
I think, just to clarify Mr. Rubino's question, 15 is the most children that would ever be present in one, any one day, right? Not just at any one time, but any one day.
Correct, correct, correct.
So we talked about staggering. We talked about staff directing traffic. As far as vegetation goes, if we're falling back on trimming trees are going to make this work better, it's not a good plan. Of course, the trees should be trimmed, but it's not going to make anything operate. They should just always be maintained. So it's overgrown now. It doesn't work, and it's going to help. I don't really think trimming the trees is going to help your case very much. That's just an observation. The other observation was, I think the video is somewhat misleading, because it looks really good. There's no traffic on that road. You know, it's like, wow, I didn't know it was so easy there. And so I'm not quite sure what you're showing us, because as Mr. Tedesco said, it doesn't really, doesn't really address the situation we're trying to understand. And that is when there's cars backing in and coming out, other than saying, there's no traffic anyway, so cars come in and pull out all the time. And I'm not really sure that's the case.
I've been out there a few times, and we've had video data. We've reviewed the data. That's just how it seems to operate. There is backup into the intersection on Harney. We showed that in the video. There is enough traffic where that happens, and we're not saying that does not happen. But on Downer Avenue, specifically near our driveway, there isn't a lot of action going on when those instances are happening. We see that the intersection is able to clear itself before vehicles need to turn from Downer or Scarsdale onto Harney. And so there's not backups from that northbound and southbound approach that we're really worried about here, but there are backups on Harney. So we're not saying that the intersection is operating perfectly along Harney, but we're also not allowing people to drop off kids on Harney. We are only allowing them to drop off their kids on Downer, because we know that that operates more safely to begin with than Harney.
So back to what I said, and I guess you answered it. I'm supposed to assume from the videos such that there's such a low, low of traffic on the, not on Harney, on Downer, that you can pull in and out at will and not have to worry about backing up traffic? I mean, that's kind of what.
Well, so we've seen that it's only blocked a handful of times throughout these peak periods, and they clear in seconds or at most that we've seen, a minute. And so if you have people in these 15-minute time periods dropping off kids, or whatever the time period is that we come to an agreement on, then there is enough time within those blocks for people to be able to back out safely. And the intent with clearing the vegetation, for example, is that if, in case there's something like a tree or a bush blocking someone's view from the driveway to Downer, specifically if people are coming like down the hill, then we can trim that in order to see if anyone is coming up in time. And so that will allow people to back out a little bit more safe.
Okay, but it seems like the, what you've put forth is dependent on staggered times. Because otherwise, as we said, 15 people coming at any time they wish will, we can assume, will affect traffic. I mean, I'll talk to my consultant, but that's what I'm hearing. The only thing you put forth is based on a staggered time of five minutes or three minutes or whatever it is. That's.
So the other, yeah, the other question I have is, relates to, you have cars coming, how are the cars getting to the facility? Are they coming down Downer? Are they, are they entering from the Bronx River Parkway and making that right turn onto Downer? And then how are they turning around? I mean, the videos that you show, show, you know, as-is. Unquestionably, what we're talking about here is adding to the vehicular density over the course of, even if we're successful in staggering it, over the course of an hour and 15 minutes at least. If it's three times, that would be an hour and 15 minutes, two times a day. And there are cars coming in. I don't know where they're coming from. I do know I walked this area. I spent an hour the day after Thanksgiving walking this entire neighborhood. And it's, it really does all filter down into just a handful, there are two or three exits to the entire Green Knolls area. And this looks like it's far and away the heavily, most heavily trafficked, Maple on the other side. But all of the traffic comes in and out of this area, and it's, it's really a maze. It doesn't, there isn't a natural spot to do a U-turn or to turn around. I'm just curious as to how, you know, it isn't just a car magically appearing on Downer, stopping and, and dropping a kid off. The car's got to navigate its way into that parking area. And it may, I would think, based on my experience and my, having lived in Eastchester for as long as I have and been in that area quite a bit, that this is, it's an inherently difficult intersection. And even adding a handful of cars in any 15-minute interval is going to complicate things quite a bit.
So I can attest to exactly where people are coming from, but whether you have to turn right or left into that driveway, we've seen that there's sufficient space to do that. I think that left is probably the harder maneuver to take, and we've seen. I think that left is probably the harder maneuver to take, and we've seen that Downer Avenue has enough width in the road currently for someone to try and turn left while someone can bypass them on the right-hand side and continue through. And so if we want to make sure that that's happening safely, there is currently not too much traffic to stop people from taking that left in, and even in the cases where there is someone kind of waiting to take that left, people would be able to go around them. And so we wouldn't expect there to be any significant issues there.
Yeah, I'm not sure, looking at a map, on my Google Maps, that you can get around a car.
Well, we're going to ask Dr. Greeley about that. I mean, but your calculations do assume that they would be able to get around a car making a left, is that correct, as you just stated?
Well, when I was out there personally, I can, I can see, so, some people, for example, they may park along the curb on that Downer Ave across from our site, and there's still sufficient space for there to be nearly one and a half to two vehicles on top of that in that same approach. And so, judging by that from my just personal experience being out in the site, and judging from the aerial and satellite images and measuring the width, there would be enough room for two people to be kind of side by side, side by side there.
I think it was asked the previous time, but is there any way you could simulate an actual example of that, rather than just doing a regular day study? Whether it's physically or just virtually, as far as showing a left-hand turn, maybe two or three vehicle, like, show us the reality, like, the picture that you show isn't the reality of what we're talking about here. I don't know if that's possible, but it's just, I know it's possible, but if it's possible for the application to do...
And that's what I've been saying.
I think last time you asked me...
Yeah, there's got to be a way to do that.
You know, left-hand turns and how many people are coming from the specific neighborhood, majority of them are probably going to be left-hand turns, which is going to cause a totally different situation.
Are you asking for potentially a rendering of what it would look like for...
No, I'm like an actual, physical show, simulation.
So those simulations tend to be inaccurate, they can be calibrated to show whatever we want. It is, in non-technical terms, it is overkill for the size of this project. This is fifteen students. We typically don't do simulations like these, because it's exorbitantly expensive.
All right, so to counter that, you're saying a fifteen-minute interval, spend fifteen minutes and do three cars into the space and see what happens, and show us.
Sorry, could you repeat that again?
If you show us one of your fifteen-minute intervals of three vehicles going in, let's see what the traffic looks like.
In a simulation?
Or physically.
Physically, as in...
You could do the same thing, get a recording and have actual, I don't think you have those spots right now, but at least show us one vehicle going in.
Give me one second, please.
I don't see why they can't. I mean, they could draw it by hand if they had...
Get three cars and give it a shot, and let's see how many people get backed up.
Sure. We can, we can agree to doing a video of showing the intersection and the driveway of three cars pulling in, maybe at the same time.
I just think it would, it would prove a point that you're trying to make, as far as the different options that these people have to bring in. If you show us a couple of real examples, a trial run of what, you know, the public's going to see every single day.
Sure, we can show a worst case where it's maybe two or three cars making that left from Downer, or two cars making that left, and then one car making that right, and seeing what it looks like.
Just figured, you know, if even someone runs late, you know, you might have a scenario where you do have four cars just trying to get into the daycare, right? So, what you're showing right now isn't that reality of what they're going to experience.
And by the way, what you said about adjusting simulations to show whatever you want is probably not ethical, so I'm thinking that you probably wouldn't do that.
I agree, but it's the reality of traffic simulations.
Yeah, it's all how you adjust all the factors, right? So, I guess you're right, but we would expect that you show us the reality.
The reality as well is that if you, you introduce three cars in a fifteen-minute period in the study, you can, you can choose when to put those cars in.
Right, you're still at the advantage.
I don't know that you get, you use the word "prove," I don't know that you're proving anything. I think you're, you're giving another piece of evidence, so to speak, but I don't know that it proves anything.
I think it's...
I understand the points that you're making, we've seen the video. I think this board is, you know, seems to be, to a person, a little skeptical about it.
To say the least, yeah. So, do you guys have anything else you want to present? Because what's next on, no, thank you for all of your work. I'm sure it's not hard, and not easy to do this, especially presenting in front of us. You're not our favorite applicant right now, sorry.
We're trying, we're trying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, can we get a response from our consultant?
Yes.
Good evening, Philip Greeley from Caius Engineering and Design. We reviewed the submission from the applicant in general. They addressed our technical comments. We also reviewed the videos that they provided for the entire peak time periods. So what they presented was a snippet. We did verify the times during both the morning and afternoon. And again, when we look at traffic, we look at one-hour periods. The data that they provided for New Rochelle indicated that traffic at that facility was spread out over about an hour and a half period arrivals. The board's comment about what happens if everybody comes at once is a concern, but in practicality, their current operation did show that the traffic was spread out. In terms of the operation of the intersection, during the morning rush hour, there were only, there was one interval where there were three vehicles stacked there. There was another interval where a school bus, which takes up more space, was stacked there with a vehicle. In the afternoon, there were four time periods where there were three vehicles that were stopped at the light for any period of time. As they presented, it does clear out. I would, you know, based on their study, the majority of the traffic, I would expect, would come off of Harney Road, arriving at this site. In terms of the volume that comes from that neighborhood on Downer and Scarsdale, on that, what I'll call the northbound approach, I believe in a one-hour period, there is somewhere around seventy-five vehicles exiting, but they're not all coming out at once. It is, if you watch the entire video, you will see that it's gradual, as with any residential neighborhood, the traffic will come out. There's the peak times that they're talking about, where you did get the queue is where several vehicles come in that instant. In terms of Rob's comment about the potential of the backup and how would you handle it, in their report, they did identify the width of the roadway. So there is width, as you know, and on that approach, there are, I don't know when it was done, how many years ago, but there are some bollards there and striping to control traffic, because the angle of the intersection is not perpendicular there. And there is a significant amount of pavement that's there. One of our recommendations is that the applicant look at possibly restriping, not at the intersection with Harney, but as you come away from Harney, on Downer and Scarsdale, you have between thirty-four to thirty-six feet of pavement, which is adequate for three lanes. So what that would possibly accommodate would be, if a vehicle was stopped, left, turning into one of the parking spaces, it would not block the through traffic out towards Harney Road. They have, I think, our recommendation is that they demonstrate that plan. It would have to be approved by the DPW and the Police Department, but I think there is significant pavement there for that to be accomplished. In terms of our recommendations, in addition, would be a post-opening evaluation to make sure that it's operating properly, if it was ever approved. In terms of the site distance improvements, that really doesn't affect your capacity, it's more of just a safety issue. Those should be done regardless, just to improve sightlines for any of the motors there, for the pedestrians, that would be something we recommend regardless. And then in terms of, I think it's important to have some sort of a schedule, that the attorney described in terms of how that would function. The question of enforceability, and then the what-if, I think the plan that I'm suggesting that they prepare would cover the what-if, that if you did get a surge and someone had to wait to make a left turn in, you're not going to queue traffic back out to Harney, Harney Road, so. But the other items, they did address them, some of our other concerns, so. But I think in terms of what the board's asking for is reasonable, in terms of looking at, how would those vehicles stack, and show it pictorially, and how it would function.
Don't go anywhere, I'm trying to think of my questions. So, we'll start with the last thing you said, as far as the simulation, would, like, we both have this idea that a simulation will show existing traffic, how it's turning, once we have the traffic turning in, turning out, and will somehow assure us that this works. Is that what the simulation does, or it's really just a function of all the parameters you put in the simulation, such that you get the answers you want?
So, the simulation models are to see how something would function, okay? In terms of your arrival patterns, that's a factor of, are there going to be three vehicles in a fifteen-minute period? So you can work that into your simulation, but basically what you're doing is you're, you're setting the parameters that it's, a typical simulation will assume random arrivals. That's just the way that the models are set up. But you can force it to kind of override that, okay, the traffic is going to arrive in, all of the traffic is going to arrive in a half-hour period. So all fifteen students would arrive in a half-hour, you could see what that effect would be. So, at the end of the day, the simulation is usually a tool to see how it's functioning, where the bottlenecks might be, and it would help in terms of evaluating if you did have two lanes striped out as two defined lanes, as opposed to a centerline striping that takes the thirty-five feet and makes it seventeen and seventeen, to make it actual lane widths, so that people are in their proper location. That's what typically we use a simulation for, is to see what is the bottleneck and what could be done, either from a timing standpoint, or from a striping geometric standpoint, to remove that bottleneck.
I have a question from Mr. Greeley. At that intersection going to Downer...
Yes.
I understand what you're saying about the striping, but my question is, there is, there was some indication that to the right, that there is a parking lane, or there is curb parking. Does that change or modify that plan that you're talking about?
Yes. So, as you come away from the intersection where parking is allowed, that would affect that ability. So, right at the intersection and up to where Downer and Scarsdale Avenue split to the south, there is the ability to stripe that. But again, that's where the Police Department and DPW would have to weigh in on, you know, once they prepare the plan, you know, are they agreeable with it? Because if they say they don't want it, then that is not a possibility.
So there's currently parking directly across from...
So, there's, I believe there is currently no restriction. That's the issue in terms of the ability of getting the two lanes. It would have to be signed to restrict it right at that point.
And then you could do, then you could, you said there's enough pavement, it just needs to be identified as such.
Right. And you would look at the other signing that's there, for example, the yield sign coming off of Harney Road really isn't your current standard sign, that would have to be modified to, to meet the current standards.
So, fine. The only other thing, I had two other questions. I think you said, one, in one hour, seventy-five vehicles. Is that right?
I believe that the applicant's study shows that in their analysis, that for the total time period on that approach was about seventy-five vehicles in...
Yeah, I kind of remember the last time, because I was thinking, that's a lot of car, I mean, that's a lot of traffic, that's one a minute.
Spread out over the one-hour period.
Is that the window we're looking at? Do you know if that was...
Yes.
It is. So, was the video showing that?
So, the video, the video matched what's in their analysis? Remember, what you saw was just a snippet of that hour period? If you watched the entire hour and you count, it matches what they have in their analysis.
Uh-huh.
I mean, they could verify the number, but it's of that magnitude, it's somewhere between seventy to seventy-five total vehicles in an hour.
Right, so one car a minute, or a little bit less, is a pretty large gap between cars.
Not to handle at a traffic signal.
Say that again?
It's not a high volume to handle on an approach at a signalized intersection?
Yeah, it's like watching water boil, it just never happens, right? You never see another car.
Yeah, in terms of each cycle, so in this particular intersection, you're running about a two-minute cycle. So over the course of the hour, you're getting, you know, somewhere in the order of thirty, thirty-plus cycles, thirty to forty cycles. So it's a couple, it's a couple of vehicles per cycle. Now, again, when you had the queue of three vehicles, that occurred about four times, I think, in the afternoon, where you had that stacked up.
And you said when you looked at it, you saw one school bus.
Yes.
Is that characteristic of what happens on Downer?
In that portion of that time of the highest one-hour period, that's when the school bus blocked, it stopped at the intersection, it had to stop. And there's also a public bus. So in the morning, for example, I'll give you the times, in the morning, the public bus was, I believe, just before eight o'clock, seven forty-nine. The school bus was at eight oh seven, where it was stopped, okay? Those are just the times where we saw a queue or a vehicle stopped at the signal.
And you're saying there's a public bus also? Or that's a, there's a public bus that...
V line.
Correct.
Runs right past. What's the frequency of that, do you know?
I don't know, we were just looking at when it had to stop at the intersection.
I think we were, the public gave us a schedule, and it seemed to run...
Probably ten minutes.
No, like every half-hour roughly, something like that, forty minutes. It ran a few times in the morning to the Scarsdale train station.
So, before we sort of wrap it up with you, we didn't talk about parking and parking spots, applicant didn't, we didn't talk, we didn't question about either. Can you, I mean, how many spots are there, or how many are conforming and how many are not?
So, the parking spaces on Downer are the ones that are being used for the pickup and drop-off. The employees and the resident would be parking on the Harney driveway. In terms of the parking spaces, the sizes are standard, they have a handicap space. So again, if it's just used for drop-offs, people could use that handicap space for drop-off, but again, I believe those spaces are really only used for pickup and drop-offs.
On Downer.
So as opposed to, if the employees were parking in those spaces, you couldn't really, you know, count on them being available. But the employees and the occupant, or at least my understanding, are going to be parking on the Harney Road driveway.
Right, that's what I'm asking. On Harney, there's two, or there's four, I guess we'd have to...
The building inspector has determined there's two onsite parking spaces. The site plan shows four, but the back two are substantially within the Harney Road right away, so not counted as parking spaces under our zoning law. That's the building inspector's interpretation. I believe it's the applicant's intent to appeal that interpretation, but that's the interpretation that he made.
Right, so of the required spaces, when they claim they've got two additional, we're saying, no, you don't, because two of those spots shown are not... saying, no, you don't, because two of those spots shown are not, are in the right-of-ways.
Right, that was the building inspector's interpretation.
Yeah, it's mine, they're not blocking the sidewalk, but they're in the public right-of-way. That's the issue. A portion of the vehicle in the second space is in the public right-of-way.
But they're not in the sidewalk?
They're not blocking the sidewalk.
Oh, so the right, whoops, the right-of-way is actually, it goes.
The right-of-way extends, you know.
Three or four feet.
Property, yes.
Just like in front of our houses, right? It's public right-of-way onto your lawn. Okay. Okay. Do you think it's, I mean, we're really working hard to get this to work. Do you think this is a stretch or it could be, if all those stars line up in a row, this could actually work? I mean, your opinion?
So I think with the roadway restriping, it would accommodate the what-if people arrived at a more condensed time period. I think the plan, and I've seen these at other facilities, where the parents are fairly good in terms of keeping to their set times because they're signing a contract to deal with that. But are there times where you get an extra car coming in? Absolutely. I think the key is if they can demonstrate on a plan that if that did happen, that we have vehicles coming, is there enough width and area that it would not back up onto Horny Road? That's the key.
And doing a simulation might help us understand that?
I think that would be helpful. I think the plan will depict how many cars you can stack, how it gets striped, how it would function, just as important as the simulation portion of it.
It'll be a better starting point to show that.
Yes. Show a plan, show how it would be striped, how it would function, and, you know, they have a plan that has dimensions, but it doesn't show the striping the way it is today and how it would be to accommodate the two lanes at that point. I think that's important for the board to see, and then it would have to be passed by the DPW and the police department to see if they're in agreement with it.
And you were saying earlier, based on the width, like right in front of the driveway entrance, that width has certain regulations as far as putting that stripe for like a left-hand turn stripe?
Yeah, so you would want to have a, a typical lane width is somewhere between 10 to 12 feet, okay? So if there's, say there's 36 feet of pavement, you could have three 12-foot lanes, which would be your standard lane widths.
So one is northbound, the other two are southbound?
Yes.
And the ones like, down, excellent.
And do you know how long the interval is on that light coming off of Downer? Because.
I forget the cycle length on it. The applicant may have it. I mean, it's in the document. I'd have to go into the appendix to see. I forget for sure the cycle length.
I think Mr. Nemisak's earlier question was really addressing that. Is it a fixed time that changes based on the time of day or usage?
So there is some actuation at the signal. It's not fully actuated. For example, there's pedestrian actuation also that comes into play. There is pedestrian activity here. As you saw in the video, you'll see some pedestrians. It varies day to day, but there is.
But this isn't one of those lights where there's, you know, if there's a car and there's a sensor that the light will.
There is, it's what would be semi-actuated, so would pick up. There could be some upgrades that could be done to that light. But again, nowadays, what on most signals that are going in new, they're using video detection as opposed to detectors in the pavement, and that would help respond to a particular demand. Again, in this case, the priority is going to be the Horny Road. So I don't see that you're going to change the timing that's allocated to Scarsdale Avenue or Downer.
But we can, we can believe that whatever the timing is on now on the light that we're seeing pictured as, is fixed and will remain that throughout the period?
Yes.
Okay.
If you went to a video detection, which is something that the town could require the applicant to work with them on, it would be more, the ability to be more responsive to a certain peak would be enhanced.
Would be what?
It would be enhanced in terms of the ability to react to real-time. Just as your video that you saw here, the video detection will see actual conditions and it would allow.
Adjust accordingly.
Yeah.
In theory, does it work?
If you go to a fully adaptive signal, yes. But the video detection itself is more consistent and less failure. A lot of signals that have loops that are cut into the pavement, they get damaged, they're not functioning, they need to be maintained, the video detection is more accurate.
Okay. All right, I don't have any other questions. You guys? No, that's everything. Thank you. What are we doing here? Okay, I have one more question. Yes?
Chairman, I would just like our traffic consultants to just clarify some of the statistics that were discussed.
Sure, and then we'll go to the public.
Very quickly.
Yeah, there was just some mention on the volume of traffic that's going along Downer. We had mentioned 75 vehicles and you had said that might be a little too high. That's because I think they may have been adding the PM and the AM time periods together, essentially the two hours together instead of the one. There's actually about half of that traffic that's along Downer in just one hour. We're seeing 44 vehicles in the AM and then 48 in the PM. So it's about half of that traffic. That's just one of the things we wanted to just address. One other thing that we wanted to address was that, the beeline bus schedule. While I was out there on November 14th, I just recorded when I saw the beeline buses and it seems like it's kind of helping people go towards the train station for their morning rush hour. And I saw one at 6:57 AM, which would be before our pickup and drop-off operations. And then I saw another one at 7:33. So all in all, we're probably talking in between maybe one to two, depending on if that first one is late for that pickup, I mean, the drop-off time period.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, let's dig in. So this is an open public hearing, so let's hear from the public. Please just state your name, address, comments.
Sure, how you doing? Good evening, members of the planning board. My name's Rich Handel. I've been a town resident for about 30 years and I've been living in the Green Knolls area for 10. I'd like to go over a few things that just came up because maybe you could help me understand these situations. You mentioned assigning a police officer there. Does the applicant pay for that? Because I don't want the town or, you know, our taxes going to pay to support a business. You're talking about restructuring the lanes, additional DPW work, signal work. How does, just help me understand this.
I think it was just a comment. I don't think we're committing to that.
No, I understand that, but if, let's say you did and the DPW got involved, who pays for that?
Well, I don't know if I'm going to answer that, but I'm going to ask, is that really even an option that the police department would consider or?
Well, I mean, if there was a condition on a private area that was outside of the scope of the Eastchester Police Department, typically the owner, applicant, person pays money where a police department personnel is, you know, like a con Edison when they're digging and there are police stationed there. Those hours are allocated for and budgeted for as a part of the project from the person that's doing the project. I think DPW is very different because that is an agency that would need to weigh in on whether or not the applicant is allowed to restripe the area.
Okay.
So, you know, that would be basically an approval. Or if, for instance, the Eastchester Police Department, my preference as the traffic prosecutor who deals with people getting tickets at that intersection because of the traffic that's coming in and out, I would want to know the Eastchester Police Department's position on, you know, the traffic condition and how it would be either addressed by these measures or it may not be realistic, but that's like, you know, an opinion that we would get that is part of their job. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, no, it does. It just appears that like this application is being belabored and we're bending over backwards to accommodate a business that doesn't fit the location, so I.
To be clear.
Yeah.
Because you raised that point, and for those watching at home, the applicant has a right to present their application.
Sure.
And, you know, it's the board's responsibility really to review it from every different angle, but they have a right to this process.
Of course.
So, you know, that is something that you really have to keep in mind.
Okay. So I'm also speaking on behalf of the residents of Green Knolls. We put out a survey. It was unanimously objecting this because the location has a daycare center. It doesn't, you know, fit the character of the neighborhood. Traffic flow, safety, parking, a lot of the things you talked about, I foresee being a problem. I travel through that intersection anywhere from 7:00 AM to 8:00, and there's a few cars backed up at Downer and I do the return across the Bronx River and there's a sea of red lights, you know, now it gets a little darker earlier. There's a backup on Horny Road when people, I imagine, would be coming to pick up their kids. They're going to be in that lineup and backup, trying to get off the Bronx River, trying to, you know, get over to Downer as people are coming and going. There's also a lot of people that walk from the train station, who walk up Downer, across that intersection. Hard to see them at night, people pulling into that driveway. I could see it being problematic. It doesn't seem to meet the bare necessities. You talked about some of the problems. It doesn't have enough parking to be able to really drop off kids, park, bring your kid in. They talked about staggering it. I don't see that working. I had two young kids, I dropped them off at daycare, in fact, in New Rochelle, a different location, had a huge parking lot. I got there right when, the earliest I could get there, and I waited to bring my kid in. Like someone said, you may be queued on Scarsdale Avenue or maybe parked on another section of Downer. If you could actually enforce that staggering, I don't foresee it being enforced. As a parent, my kid doesn't have their lunch, they don't have something, I'm late, sometimes I'm early. What if a kid's sick, someone else has to go there during the day? It's just, there's in and out. And when they say a 15-kid limit, 15-child limit, is that 15 in the morning and a different 15 in the afternoon?
We asked that question, it was same 15.
The same 15.
Only maximum of 15 in one day.
Okay. So we did talk about the parking spaces, not going to repeat that again. We talked about the staggering. I also did submit this, but, you know, there's some additional points because the consultants brought up some other things. They compared the location to Alcamont, totally different, straight roads, clear path. As you said, it's a tight intersection. You have three streets going into one spot. And then we also had a problem I mentioned earlier about pedestrians. There was a problem there, someone got hit. I think it happened more than once. Now, the way the pedestrian crosswalk is, all the lights are red at the same time. No one can make a left, no one can make a right, they're all red. Pedestrian can walk across safely, or safer because I've seen some people blow the light. And there was some talk about possibly changing the crosswalk light to make it so there's less traffic back up. That would be against what we tried to do to make, you know, it safe for the pedestrians and also potentially for parents that are dropping off their kids. It would be dangerous if, let's say they park on the north side of Scarsdale Avenue and they decide to walk across because they don't want to deal with the traffic of pulling in and out of Downer. Sometimes people do that, they, you know, like avoid that congestion right where it is, park a little further away and walk. It's a dangerous intersection to drag a kid across. And we talked about the proximity to Bronx River. Personally, as a parent, the playground they talk about in the front and the side, there's a lot of traffic going through there, a lot of, you know, car pollution going by. I don't want my kids playing out there. I don't think it's a safe environment. If a car, you know, blows the light, it's right into the front yard. It's just a dangerous situation. And I think in summary, these concerns are serious and, you know, we might make sure the safety of the children, the quality of life residents, and the integrity of the existing zoning laws. And the applicant is repeatedly talking about safety. If they were so concerned about safety at this location, they wouldn't even put this application in. It's just not suitable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll just want to be a little bit mindful of the time because it's almost 8:40. It's just about 8:40, so.
Hello. My name is Luigi Pallucari. I live up five down next to the property. I want to share that I'm not in favor for this request for a daycare center on this property. The location has many traffic issues already. The traffic light pattern was changed months ago. The island has changed at least three times since I have lived here, to help people cross the street. Someone was hit by a car at that corner months ago. Adding daily drop-off and pickups during rush hour would make it less safe. Also, I don't think a daycare is right for this quite residential neighborhood. Green Knolls has created safety risks that we do not need. Thank you for your considering my concern. Also, going back to the traffic, if a person got to make a left from Downer, go left, and you have two cars there, which will occupy the space for parking the driveway, how do you manage when the traffic on Horny Road is full and you cannot make the turn? For me to come out from the driveway from next to this property is a nightmare sometimes because I got to watch from Scarsdale Avenue, from Horny Road, and from Downer. So you have to watch, sometimes it's very, very dangerous. Also, when you have the pickup of the garbage truck in the area, what are you going to make? You're going to tell the garbage people to come at 7:00, 8:00 to pick up the garbage? They come anytime during the day. So if that happened, the drop-off or pickup, like they said, that they're going to have 15 minutes or whatever, I don't see that physical to happen. When you have the gardener park the truck in the area, it's very, very, very dangerous and difficult to drive around. So I don't know. Really, you have to consider what's going on here. It's very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, any other comments, please?
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Kevin Dunne and I live at 29 Bronson Avenue. And, you know, I would just like to speak to the fact that Green Knolls-Green Vale is a neighborhood that my wife and I have lived in for eight years now. We feel blessed to live in this neighborhood. And, you know, we knew nothing about it, but I think part of the big attraction, but once we settled in, was the community-minded spirit in this neighborhood. We've made fabulous neighbors. What I love about this neighborhood is the neighbors look out for each other, people help each other, and there's just a strong spirit of community here. And we're not isolationist in this neighborhood. You know, I'm a relative, you know, probie baby, you know, for eight years living here. But what I also love about this neighborhood is Green Knolls-Green Vale. But what I also love about this neighborhood is Green Knolls-Green Vale, they extend themselves to the community, you know? We have food drives, we have clothing drives. And it's a neighborhood comprised of men and women who work their tails off, you know? Commuting into the city. I'm semi-retired myself today, but people work hard to live here. The homes are beautiful, the, the neighbors maintain their homes. So, you know, for myself and my wife and some of my neighbors that I share this with, and I'm on the board with Rich as the liaison to one of the departments here, is we're, what I think our big concern is the quality of life issues, you know? You know, and it's a, it's an emotional topic, because we're talking about like our most precious possession, children, the care of children. I'm a school nurse taking care of autistic children, you know, and they're a prized possession. So, you know, for me, we don't want to seem like, you know, we have a bully mentality, you know, not in my neighborhood. That's not what it's about, you know, for me. It's about maintaining this quality of life. Home values, yes, i- is a factor, but I just don't feel that it's the right fit in the right spot, placing this daycare center there. You know, with all due respect to the applicants and the owner, and, you know, the people here speaking on their behalf tonight, so, you know, it's my wish that this be denied, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Turelli, 18 Bassett Place. I'm going to make a quick. Thirty-seven years ago, 32 Harney Road was a bottleneck. It's a bottleneck today. I hope that you guys and ladies reject the application. Thank you.
Luis Heavy at Fort Worth Lane. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just want to ask you a question, just trying to understand the process a little bit more. You have to refer the application to the zoning board of appeals for the parking. That, that part I'm not clear about. Is that going first and then come to you, or here first, then you refer to over there, and then-
Here, here first. Please start here.
You start here.
You start here, and then the variance with parking.
Correct, that's correct. Starts here for preliminary site planning, to talk about all the issues we've been talking about, and then the board will refer to the zoning board for evaluation of the special use permit and the interpretation or variance request.
So you could choose not to refer to the zo- to the zoning board?
They, we could, but I don't think we'd be able to, to do that. They have a right to look at the zo- the zoning variances, unless there's something that we object with vehemently. If we do, we can re- we can refer to the zoning board and say it's our recommendation and it not be approved.
So if they have the right, and the building inspector already rejected the application due to parking, why all this process? Not go there directly and then come back here? I'm just asking, because we've been through this-
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of our-
Like the fourth time in the year, or something like that?
It's kind of our obligation, as a planning board, to understand what's in front of us, and get as ma- many facts in front of us, so we can make a determination. And then the zoning, it's, zoning and planning sort of co-mingle what we do. They're just as concerned about parking and traffic and everything else, and traffic as we are. It's not, it's not as clear as on some other applications. So I think zoning is going to look at this probably more rigidly than we are regarding traffic. So, I, I mean, we are, we're trying to get all the facts together, so we understand that, so we could either refer to them with the, you know, just not say anything, or make an assessment now before we refer to them and say, we strongly are, you know, ask you not to consider this, which they will take into account when it comes in front of them.
Okay, thanks for the, the clarification. Now, with all due respect to the attorney and the traffic engineers, I know it's hard work, you know, putting all that package together, but really what we're trying to do here is to fit a square peg in a round hole, quite frankly. This application is not feasible, for all this, all the reasons presented here forth. So, you know, you have the traffic, the pedestrian issue, safety. I mean, the applicant keeps making comparisons against Children's Corner on Alcamont and Scarsdale. I'm sorry, that's an apple and an orange. Okay. Completely different situation. Plenty of parking on Alca- on Children's Corner. The playground is elevated, it's not a great, like 32 Harney. The playground is in the front, facing the street, right? This playground right here, but against one of the property's back backyard. So now you're going to have, I don't want to speak for the owner of that property, to Tudor Lane, but now I'm going to have, well, they're going to have fifteen kids, really, right next to their back backyard, all year round, every time they're out. So think about it. When you try to resell this property, or Mrs. Gray's and Luigi's property right next door, what do you think is going to happen? There's no buffer, there's nothing there. And look, nothing against children, we all love children, have kids of my own, but fifteen kids, that's, if it's enforceable. Could be twenty, twenty-five. Who's going to enforce that? It's not enforceable, folks. It's not. Full stop.
That's, that's not accurate, okay?
How are you going to enforce it?
Well, we, the town can enforce it, and one of the changes in the application was that one of the conditions that they are agreeing to was that it would be a cap of fifteen children.
Okay.
Okay? The town can enforce that and would enforce that. So, you know, there, there are a lot of issues with this application. You know, safety concerns, traffic concerns, but that is not an issue based upon the application that is before the board at this point.
All right, let's go with that fifteen. You still cannot enforce the staggering for drop-off and pickup, that's not enforceable. You may do it for a few days, but you're not going to have somebody sitting there for a whole, full year, just watching this, right?
That's kind of your opinion. I mean, you have a right to have the opinion, and we have other people that say it is.
Understood, and I would agree that the EPD needs to look at this. They, they really need to look at this, particularly this, the issue with the pedestrian dedicated face. I hope the town is not considering removing that. We fought, well, not fought, but we worked with the town and Green Knolls and the county to get a dedicated pedestrian face only at that intersection. It's much safer now than it was two years ago. So hopefully, this won't be changing. All right? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Hello. I've spoken before. My name is Josephine Bocialink. I've been a resident of Downer Avenue for 29 years. So I've said a lot of things in the other meetings, I won't repeat them. My, my, I did give my full talking points to Noel Wilson, who can supply them to you, but you probably remember them. But one thing that I want to mention is that there was quite a lot of talk about there being extra width in the street, and maybe we can make three lanes. I don't think that's feasible, because the, and it sounds like you walked around and you know what it looks like. The, the reason that there's extra space is because, as one of my neighbors mentioned, there, there's also Scarsdale Avenue. So, so it's, it's not that there's a really wide space for three lanes, it's that we have, we have Downer going straight down to the train station, so we have it divided so that you can, you know, you have leaving Downer and entering Downer, but you have this extra piece, which is coming in from Harney Road-
You have a traffic island there, a big triangle, and one lane kind of enters in-
Yeah.
From that, from, from, from Harney Road, the other is coming across from Scarsdale, and they don't naturally merge. They, they don't, they don't naturally continue into two lanes. I think it would be a very difficult-
Yeah, it's not, it's not really space for three lanes. There's this merge from Harney to go into Downer, and that's to alleviate a backup by Harney. But, but it has to merge with the traffic coming from Scarsdale Avenue and coming, and coming in, and then, yes, there's a little bit more width, because it's not, it's not just Downer, it, it veers off also. So that's actually a different street that's, that's continuing on towards Scarsdale Avenue. You, you really can't make three lanes, and if you think about it, Downer Avenue is a one-lane, two-way street, but it's really only one lane because of the parking. So are we talking about making three lanes for the space of one house to accommodate the daycare center, and then expect the three lanes to become one lane in the next house distance? I mean, it, the, it sounds quite absurd when you think about it. It's a residential street, it's a one-lane street, and you're going to create three lanes just at the very bottom? It doesn't make sense. And, and as someone said, you're, it just seems like you're trying to fit a, a round peg in a, in a square hole, or vice versa, however that, that goes. But also, there was mention of two cars side-by-side fitting. It, I wish I had the aerial shot to show you, but they don't, because it's, it's different things. You, you, you have this merge, it's, you can't have two cars there. And the bus does stop there, we have a lot of school buses, we have a lot of traffic. I think the traffic study shows a lot of traffic. When I look at it, I look at the numbers, and then I read the statement saying, "Little to no impact." It doesn't mesh. The conclusions in the traffic study don't mesh with the data that they provided, so I just really just want to alert, alert you to, to that. Also, I'm a little disappointed that no simulations were provided. You clearly asked for this, and they didn't provide it. And now they're saying, oh, maybe we can provide it next time. But why should, why should we keep doing this? Your time is valuable, everybody's time is valuable. If they had a good simulation that showed anything good, they would have brought it today, I believe. They didn't do that, and it does, and, and almost everyone of these fifteen parents is going to be coming from Harney Road. They're not going to be coming all the way. It doesn't make sense to take White Plains Road and then go on Downer. They're going to be coming from Harney Road, it's the main street. So you're almost always going to have people coming from the Bronx River Parkway, where they have to make the right and the immediate left into the driveway, and there's always going to be cars there. It just doesn't make sense. There's nothing you can do to fix this. It will always be dangerous, it doesn't make sense for a residential street. I, I, I think that's why all the residents have opposed this so strongly. I mean, we've had two separate petitions, both times we got over 230 signatures. I mean, that, that means something. People feel very worried about this. And, and lastly, no one's focused on it, but beautification in the neighborhood is a big thing, and it's really important to us. And now we have a proposal for a four-foot chain-link fence going along the whole, I, I didn't, last time, this is new from last time, the whole of Downer, the whole property on Downer is going to be completely covered, like the whole front is going to be this four-foot chain-link fence, so the whole way on Downer, which is my street, and then on Harney Road, it's, it's more, it's maybe at least two-thirds of the property. I haven't seen in all of, I haven't seen in all of East Chester, maybe you know better than me, but any house that's been allowed to have a chain-link fence covering the whole front of, almost the whole front of their house on two sides, or even on one side, I haven't seen it. It doesn't fit with the neighborhood, and, and I, I don't, I don't think that should be permitted. And I mentioned before that I, I'm also concerned about privacy for my neighbors. There, there was mention of CCTV footage. I would not want to be a house adjacent where my, I'm in my yard, and there's video being taken of me. So I, I do want to emphasize that again, but I think you have a lot of concerns too, and I'm just hoping that we can actually just take a stand now and say, we don't recommend this. If it has to go back to the zoning board, I hope that you would say, you don't recommend it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zisa Pellicari. I'm representing my parents who live at Five Downer. I just have a question regarding the number of children that can be present at one time in a residential daycare, whether intermittent or full-time. Is the maximum number fifteen, or is it eight at any time?
For the intermittent, our code allows up to 25 children, but the applicant has agreed to cap the number of children at 15, because I think, because of the, the traffic-related issues that we've been discussing.
All right. Just wanted to get verification for myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We were hoping you were going to come up.
I'm going to be quick. Good evening. My name is Pellicari. I live at Five Downer. I'm getting a little bit concerned, because we getting camera here, camera there, we get pickup here, pickup there. In the meantime, when we ask if we can put a camera to avoid car speeding, it says it's impossible. We are losing the privacy of Green Knolls from all these. I never had a camera in my life pointed on my house. Now I have a camera pointed on my house, I have to be careful. When my kids are coming home, the light goes on. Why I have to have that? And on top of that, all this traffic pattern that they show you, it's nothing what they show you. Because for me, that I live, when people coming from Harney Road, that they're going wa- they're going to run with their car into Downer, and then they're going to go to 32 Downer, where is the three parking spots, they're going to go like this, okay? If there is a car coming from Scarsdale Avenue, it's going to find a car that is turning. If there is a car that is coming from Downer, up Downer, coming down, it's going to find another car that is going like this. What's going to happen in the morning? I see when the bus is going to take the children, it stops at Scarsdale Avenue, it has, even if it has the, the stop sign out, people, they're still running. We have prime time, we have shop and, and stop, we have all the, the cars that they do, all the deliveries, they are private car. So I am the person that I live in that road, and when I hear the traffic pattern that these people are giving you, it's baloney. Believe me when I tell you, it's baloney. I'm done. Good night.
Okay. No more comments from the public?
Good evening. My name is Alex. I live in Tudor Lane. I'm a next-door neighbor with the applicant, and I had just a few questions for, you know, for you people. Who, who protects the benefits of the town? Or who protects, you know, does this application benefit the town or, or not? Or what is the benefit for this, if it gets approved?
So, good question, but I, I think my response is going to be, we're not here to protect anyone's benefits, we're here to evaluate the application that's put in front of me, and the evidence that's been given to us, and make a determination if it's suitable or not. We don't take the benefit of the community. We imagine by doing that, we are, we are looking out for the community's benefit.
Yeah, the applicant has a right to make an application, and it is within its right to do so, and our role is to assess the, the effects of, of that application were to be approved.
Okay. So, so it means if there is any disadvantage for the town, if town is going to lose revenue, like, you know, is, is it going to make more, you know, is it going to get more tax?
I wouldn't even know how to- I wouldn't even know how to think about that. It's not something we've ever discussed, nor would we discuss it.
Excuse me?
That's not the issue in front of this board.
It's site plan.
It's not an issue, okay. Because they have been, you know, answered only, or they spoke only about parking, parking. They didn't talk about, you know, like, the gentleman mentioned, you know, like, the outdoor, how is it going to be enforced? So it's only indoor, is it correct?
No.
You know, is it going to be only enforced, the kids to be inside?
No, it's all of the planning functions that you've heard us address. The parking, the circulation, the walking, all of those other functions that mostly occur outside.
Okay. Because I heard only talking about just the parking, you know, only the parking, the traffic. So they didn't talk about if it's going to affect, you know, the home values going down or not? Is that a matter? Is it a matter if, you know, turning one property from residential into a daycare, is it considered if the home values in the neighborhood are going to go down or not?
We have a standard in the zoning law that provides the criteria that the board applies for site plan approval, and then that the zoning board will apply for special use permits. And those are the criteria that the board is focusing on. Site layout, access, parking, the location of the play areas on the exterior, architectural elements at the planning board. Those are the considerations that the boards consider.
I see. Okay. And one thing that I've noticed is that the first time they mentioned they have seven parking lots, now they have three parking lots. Where did before?
Spaces, spaces?
Yes, parking spaces. Now, where did the four parking spots, where did they go? Because I don't see no change.
There are three parking spaces in the Downer Avenue driveway. It was the building inspector's interpretation that there are two onsite parking spaces in the Harney Road driveway. The applicant is showing that there is space for two tandem spaces behind those spaces, but they protrude predominantly into the right-of-way. So the building inspector has determined that they are not onsite parking spaces in accordance with the zoning law. That's where the difference between the five spaces and the seven spaces come from. How those two spaces that the applicant showed that protrude into the right-of-way are considered.
There are two separate driveways.
Yeah. I think to answer your question, there's two separate driveways. One, the quote-unquote that you said four, and then the other one is the three that you mentioned, which is different than what we're talking about.
Is it illegal any of them, or?
There are five... So there's minimum parking requirement in the zoning law. There are five onsite spaces. So the building inspector has determined that it's deficient, right? So the applicant will be seeking a variance or an interpretation as to those back two spaces in the Harney Road driveway.
So I heard last time that was illegal. You know, what does it mean, you know?
Right. They're not legal parking spaces. Those two back spaces are not legal parking spaces in the sense that they do not qualify for the definition of an onsite parking space in our zoning law. That is what the term illegal means when applied to those two back parking spaces. That they don't meet the requirements of the zoning law.
When something doesn't meet the requirement under the zoning law, it's not illegal in the sense that you are making it. It is at variance with the zoning law. And an applicant, any applicant, has the right to come before the zoning board and ask for a variance, special permission, if you will, to operate outside of the zoning law for any given purpose. And there is a mechanism for that. That is why this board does not hear applications for variances. The zoning board does. Because they have to take as a framework that they have to consider when someone asks to, if you were going to build something, and it was too close to your neighbor's property. That doesn't make... Do you understand what I'm saying?
Thank you. And I apologize for, you know, asking something that is out of scope of...
So I think there's not enough parking spaces. We all know that. They need a variance. Whether they showed five or seven, they need a variance. And they're going to have to get that from zoning.
Okay. And my last question is this. Does the petitions, you know, people that they voted, does it matter? Does it, you know, do you keep in consideration that? Because as far as I know, almost 100 or 99% of, you know, Green No residents, they said no. Does it matter that?
It's not a vote. It's not a vote. The residents don't get the vote, and we have to accept that vote. But certainly, we listen, and we weigh all of the factors that come before us. And we certainly are hearing, not only from the results of these petitions, but also from the members of the public, the reasons why they are not in favor of this application. And we do consider that. We listen, we evaluate, and we make determinations based on that.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
If I could just add one thing about the playgrounds, because we didn't really talk about that too much, because we had so many other things to discuss. But I do want to mention that the playground spaces are really inappropriate, as we talked about last time. And it's a narrow little strip right in front of the house. There really isn't space for kids to play. And now it's been extended around the corner, which means you even have the corner of the house making it more dangerous for kids. I know if it was me, the way I used to play when I was a kid, I'd hit my head on that corner every day if I was at this nursery school. And the other playground, that's also not very good, because it's not, it's not like all at ground level, where they're going to make grass. There's like a stone wall because it's sunken down. If you look at the picture, it was in the application, and I have it on my phone. You have, you have like a wall all around, and that's not very safe. I'm sure I would have hit my head every day of the week. So I do encourage you also, when you look at the play spaces, those aren't normal play spaces. I have safer play spaces in my own yard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so just to, just to explain to the public a little bit more clearly about us having to send this to the zoning board. There's really no obligation for us to do that. What we do is actually, we vote and make a motion to see if we all agree, or who is for or against moving this on to zoning. So right now, you have three people right here. And I'm not quite sure where we all stand on this. I do know that you need to have a unanimous vote in order to move this on to the next stage. And there's only three of us, and I'm not quite sure how we'll vote. So just wanted to put this, that forth. But there's no obligation that it go to zoning. There's, we have to vote on it. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I heard that it seems like, or I agree, because it was my idea to start with, is to do a simulation that might help us sort this out from the traffic point of view a little bit more. It doesn't really mean anything. It just means that it might help us evaluate this, because there's a number of considerations. Not all of them, not all of them having to do with the traffic situation and parking. But at this point, I think might be the best route to go, to do that, come back and see what the full board thinks about this. That's my opinion. Right now, I think it's better to have five people here than three.
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to ask for a referral, but I'm getting the sense that you definitely wanted a little more data. I think it'd be helpful if, as last time, AKRF talks to Colliers and Dr. Greeley about how you want to present, what's the best way to present the information you're looking for. I think that'd be helpful. And we'll come back before the planning board and present that information.
Great.
Yeah, I also think if part of what Dr. Greeley was discussing was that, you know, there should be a plan in terms of restriping that may involve other agencies, I think that would be something that you would want to see.
Bring that forth for the next meeting.
We can set up a meeting with the police department and the highway department if you'd like. Very good.
Just, not guaranteeing anything, but it'll just be more data for us to look at.
Yeah. And I am quite skeptical about the ability to add a third lane under the circumstances there. And that's not even including the fact that there are no sidewalks there. If you have pedestrians, as I was last week, wandering into that neighborhood, again, it all bottlenecks. And there's an island, a traffic island, there are bollards. There's quite a bit going on there that makes it a very abnormal, you know, certainly unusual intersection, and one coming off of multiple hills as well. It's just a somewhat problematic space, in my view, and experience. So, but the idea of, you know, trying to show us how it could work, I'm all for it.
I also think if the board found out that it was not feasible to stripe, to change the striping, that also may be something that you would need to know.
Consider, yeah. I agree. So both of those things, you'll work out with them to what it is, would help us understand this better. Thank you, Doctor. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Do you want to wrap up? Yeah, if you want to wrap up, or any more comments?
Oh, I just have one question. I just want clarification on the simulation. So are you looking for more of a computer-based simulation, or are you looking for us to take a video, having three people drive into the driveway? Which one would you prefer?
I'm not the expert on the simulation, so I'm, of course, going to defer to our expert. But it seems like we don't just need pictures that show it works. I think something that actually shows an animation of what it is, based on actual data, and convinces or describes to us what would actually happen, like real-life data.
In terms of that, we can do an animation on a computer, or we could just have three people, a video of three people driving into the driveway. No, you want a simulation that isn't on a computer.
Yeah, we need like a real simulation with real software that's credible.
If I may, if the simulations or the models are dependent on what's put into them, I think it would probably be helpful for the board to see what three cars coming in looks like, what five cars coming in looks like, at variant, just to see what could go wrong in different scenarios. I think that would probably give you a better picture.
Right. Different conditions, different, yeah, I imagine there's multiple design conditions.
Cars coming in when the cars are stacked, blocking the driveway, you know, time. I think that you need to explore a couple of different scenarios. Dr. Greeley, I don't know if that's feasible to do, but I think that's the kind of information you want.
And by the way, I certainly recognize that you don't want, there is scale here. We, I don't want you to break the bank making a simulation here. Give us a simulation that is going to provide us with the assurances that we're looking for, that this isn't going to be a problem. If you can do that. If it is going to be a problem, and you discover that during the simulation, well, you know, I would, I would hope that you'd let us know that as well.
Understood. We will follow up with Phil, with your traffic consultant, and speak with him on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So public hearings are going to stay open?
Can I ask one question about the simulation? Are we taking into consideration various variables, for example, weather, or, you know, the buses, or an accident, or fire trucks? Can we give like a worst-case scenario version of the simulation, so we get an idea of what it is, not just three cars going in and out, and, you know?
I think we have...
A simulation, it's what you put into it.
I think you want the simulation to show the typical condition. I think that's what you're going to want.
Can we make worst-case scenario conditions?
I think you're going to want the simulation to show the typical peak-hour condition, because that is what we're going to experience day-to-day, on a day-to-day basis. I think that's what you want evaluated.
So to answer your question, I want the same thing you want. I want the absolute, but I'm going to defer to our expert, who's the one who's going to help put this together and come up with the information that we're looking for. I don't know if what you're asking for is, we're going to let Ms. Dr. Greeley help them. Okay? Thank you. I'll be sure that's it. Anyone else? All right, everyone, everyone go home.
Move on, yeah.
You could stay around for the rest of the applications if you want, all right?
Thank you to everyone else.
And I'm just going to ask, for those of you who are leaving after this application, just please don't congregate outside. It gets very loud in here, and we have other applicants waiting. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Happy holidays. The next application is, wow, it's only the fourth one, 23-30, 249 Main. Thank you. You, too.
Only three weeks till Christmas.
Bueno tal. That's how you say it, right?
Angela, how does it feel not to be the controversial application?
You can advocate for them if you'd like. You can work on their application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Smith, Principal of Planning and Development Advisors. I think the last time we were here, back in September or October, I had made a reference to the movie Groundhog Day, and here we are, back again. So the, at the last meeting, we were directed to appear before the Architectural Review Board. We made a presentation before them at the last meeting. I think you have their recommendation. Essentially, they, there was an unanimous recommendation with the project as proposed. So with that, we're here for any additional comments you may have. I think the, we've responded to the engineering comments. I think there may be some technical issues that could be responded to as conditions of approval. Angela Agavino is here from Eastchester Manor Developers. He's the applicant. I think he'd like to say a couple words just to review what was presented before the ARB, and to see if you have any additional questions with respect to the application.
Hey, doing? My name is Angela Agavino. I'm the owner and hopefully, finally, the builder of this project. We did a couple changes as respect to you guys and the Architecture Review Board. We put in some, you know, we showed the fencing along the property line. That was, that was a question. So the plan that I just submitted to you, or the new architecture plans, they were on the plans. It just wasn't highlighted. There's just a few minor things that were added. And they loved the plan. Hopefully, you guys also like the changes that we made. And I guess, do you guys have any questions for me, or any concerns that I could answer?
We do have a memo from our engineering consultant on this application, and Mr. Boland is here, if you have any questions about that.
Sarah, I know you wrote the memo. I think that just as everything's manageable. Rick?
Good evening. Rick Bolander, K C J Consulting. The big concern on the previous iteration of this project was just the depth of the stormwater practice. That's obviously been raised a significant amount, which would lend itself to infiltration. We were worried about, because it was so deep, you know, groundwater or rock, the feasibility of infiltration wasn't realistic. Now that's been raised by so much, and we're familiar with the soils out there, and infiltration is absolutely feasible. And the design is good. Really just buttoning up right now. We would like to see some form of pretreatment because of the runoff from driveways. And it's not really so much the roof runoff that we're concerned about for the pretreatment, but it's the runoff from the driveways that could pick up, you know, silt, oil, or whatnot. And we've spoken with the engineer about that as well. So he's aware, and it's a simple fix to add pretreatment in there. But that was our big concern with the stormwater. All the other utilities, sanitary is pretty straightforward, but that was, that was really it.
Okay. Yep. So in your memo, in your... So, in your memo, in your memo dating December 3rd, there's a bunch, there's a number of comments, and you responded to their responses. There's a couple that haven't been addressed. I'm assuming they're sort of minor?
Yes, they are. It's, and again, I've, I've spoken with the engineer about that. Um, he's well aware of it, and we, you know, he kind of verbally told me how he was going to, um, address those, and we're comfortable with that.
Okay, so the ones that don't have replies or responses are bold, you're saying?
Are easily...
Okay, I'll go with that. Thank you. Everything else seems to be okay?
Yeah, they can, those conditions, they can become conditions of approval.
We're comfortable with that. If you guys are, we are.
That's fine. So then, I think this is still an, um, open public hearing?
Yes.
So, thank you, Rick. So, um, this is an open public hearing. If there's any comments from the public, please come forth.
It's 249 Main Street.
249 Main, right. Now, so then, I will make a motion to close the public hearing on application 2330, 249 Main Street.
Second.
So, we're going to need, oh, sorry, vote, and then I'll chime in. Sorry, vote, and then I'll chime in.
We're just closing. We're not approving. You're going to go through your conditions. Okay, so, public hearing is now closed. Do we go through that?
Yep, I think we were, before, we were rudely interrupted.
Sorry.
I think, no, we, we got a second and one aye, but I think...
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You're forgiven.
Yes, so I just wanted to remind you that although you have adopted a secret negative...
You can do that all you want. Keep me out of trouble, that's fine.
Although you've adopted into secret negative declaration for this application, but it was on a prior iteration, and I think we should probably think about amending it because the plan has significantly changed. Uh, and I think it would be appropriate to amend that negative declaration based on the fact that the property is significantly less intense than it was when the negative declaration was granted. So, there's fewer units, so lower traffic generation, lower parking requirements, lower utility usage, less impervious surface. So for all those reasons, I think it would be appropriate for you to amend the negative declaration, um, for this application.
So, based on the reasons put forth by, um, by Noel, I do make a motion to adopt an amended negative declaration for the application, uh, 2330, 249 Main.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We already did the public hearing, which is closed, and I think you have conditions, Noel?
I do, yes. So a couple, I'll read through them, and then you can consider a motion. So, um, conditions before a building permit would be, uh, number one, the applicant should address all the comments in the memorandum from KSCJ dated December 3rd, 2025, to the satisfaction of KSCJ. Um, the applicant shall provide a confirmation, uh, that an approval of an application for permit to do work and within, in within, in within the county road area by the Westchester County Department of Public Works, for all improvements within the right-of-way of Main Street has been obtained. Um, if you recall from the very first iteration of this application, um, there's a condition about protection during construction of the firehouse. So the applicant shall provide the building inspector with a construction, protection, and monitoring measures plan as recommended by the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, to avoid damaging the Waverly Engine Company Number One Firehouse. Uh, number four, the applicant shall submit a copy of a work zone traffic control plan associated with the driveway and work within the county right-of-way to the Building Department and the Highway Department for review. Uh, and condition number five, before the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall pay all outstanding application fees, including any outstanding consulting fees accrued during the review of this application, or after the date of this resolution, to confirm that any conditions of the resolution have been satisfied. And then, um, conditions to be satisfied before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy is number one, that county permit that I referenced in the first set, yeah, is closed, uh, and that the applicant provides a certification by a New York State-registered landscape architect that all the landscaping shown on the planting plan is approved, and that those are established. And then, finally, just our, um, uh, general condition, number one, would be any power lines that cross the driveway have a minimum clearance of seventeen feet six inches, and prior to installing any lines across the driveway, the applicant shall consult with the fire department to ensure adequate clearance for fire apparatus. Um, and the last is our general condition, that the approval authorizes only the applicant to undertake only the activities specifically depicted on the plan submitted for and reviewed at this meeting in accordance with the resolution, and any changes require amended approval.
So, I take it that you know those conditions and would have done regardless, but...
Yes, sir.
You didn't hear anything that you weren't aware?
No, we're minimal to all those conditions. Thank you.
Okay, good. So, then, subject to those conditions, I do make a motion to approve this application, 2330, 249 Main Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Appreciate it.
To you.
We're going to miss you, Angela.
Merry Christmas.
You've become a fixture here.
All right. The next application is 2538, uh, Simonite Country Club.
Good evening again. For the record, Lucia Kyokyo with Cuddine Fader on behalf of Cywinoy. Um, when we were, uh, since we've been here in June was the last appearance, uh, we did appear before the Zoning Board of Appeals. They granted the required area variances for the height of the proposed maintenance buildings. We also appeared before the Architectural Review Board last month, and they recommended approval of the project. Um, the project has not changed since you saw it in June. Um, the architectural plans are the same. Um, we did also address comments from the town's consultant, uh, and that was really providing more data on the plans and more data in the stormwater management plan. So it didn't really change fundamentally the design. Um, I do understand that Captain Pintavalli had a request to increase the width of the access road off of California Road from seventeen to twenty. We can accommodate that request. It's not really a large amount. Um, so we would ask, if you're inclined to approve the application, that, make that a condition. Um, I can run through the plan again if anyone's interested, um, or we can answer any questions that, that you may have.
No, I don't really need to see the plan again. Do you guys want to see it?
No, I recall it from the first time, and it seemed very well organized and sensible.
Yeah, and basically, we're not changing any of the maintenance functions. What we're trying to do with this project is bring it indoors.
Yeah, yeah.
So, are you okay with all the, okay, you don't need to come up. Stay there. Um, so then, we agree with what you said. The comments have been addressed. We don't need to see the plan. This is, we don't have any comments. This is still an open public hearing. If anyone has any comments on this application, Cywinoy Country Club, please keep, come forward. Uh, no. Okay, so we can, hmm, review the EAF?
Yeah, so this is an unlisted action under SECR. Um, so what we decided for this application was to do an uncoordinated review. So the Zoning Board of Appeals did its own SECR review before granting the variances. So your board still has to make a SECR determination. So I have in your packets before you a copy of the applicant's environmental assessment form that was submitted in June, and then we prepared a draft of the Part Two, which has all the different, um, areas of environmental impact to study. Uh, in our draft version, we've checked no or small impact may occur for each one, and just going through some of the rationale for that is that the applicant is not really intensifying the use of the property here. They're just taking existing maintenance operations, moving them predominantly indoors in associate with, in association with that work. There's going to be significant stormwater improvements. There's going to be new landscaping. There's going to be an improved parking area. Um, so, taking all those things combined, um, if you look through that Part Two, everything can be checked, no or small impact. If you have any questions about the EAF, or if you have any questions about the plans that you want to discuss in the context of the environmental impacts, we can certainly do that.
Uh, no, I take your word for it. So, so then, I could go straight to the, uh, the negative declaration on this?
Yep.
And so I can make a motion to approve a negative declaration for application 2538, Cywinoy Country Club, for the reasons stated by Noel just a moment ago in Parts One, Two, and Three of the EAF?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I can close the public hearing. I make a motion to close the public hearing on the application, 2538, Cywinoy Country Club.
Second.
Great, and then...
Right, you got it.
What's that?
Second.
Oh, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you. Uh, did you go over conditions, or?
I do have some conditions to propose for you. Um, so the first, you know, if two, um, three conditions, uh, as a condition to the issuance of a building permit. The first would be to, uh, address all the comments in the memo from KSCJ dated December 3rd, 2025. Um, the second is, as per the fire department's comments, the applicant shall revise the plans to widen the entrance and driveway to twenty feet. And the third is that the applicant shall pay all outstanding application fees, including outstanding consulting fees accrued during the review of the application, or after the date of this resolution, to confirm that the conditions of the resolution have been satisfied in full. And then, conditions prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide a certification by a New York State-registered landscape architect that the landscape plantings have been installed per the approved plan. And, um, uh, number four, this property requires a, um, a full SWIP, so the applicant will have to file a stormwater maintenance agreement. So a stormwater maintenance agreement in a form acceptable to the town's consulting, uh, engineer and the board's counsel shall be recorded in the Westchester County Clerk's office, and a copy of the agreement, as recorded, shall be filed with the Building Department. And then, our ongoing conditions, um, the applicant shall provide the Town of Eastchester Building Department and the Town of Eastchester Fire Department with a list of chemicals proposed to be used and stored, along with the MSDS sheets for such chemicals, and the standard condition about this approval, uh, having to comply with the plans, and if it does not, then the applicant will have to return for amended approval.
Okay, so, subject to those conditions, let's move forward, and, um, do you have any more comments, guys?
No further comments.
Close.
And you have no, no issue with any of those conditions?
No problems with those conditions.
Great, then I make a motion to approve 2538, Cywinoy Country Club, One Cywinoy Clubway, subject to the conditions, just read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Merry Christmas.
Yep.
The next application is 24, or 25, 34 Water Street, One and Three Reglano Way.
Good evening, members of the planning board, and my name is Elliot Senor, the Office of Gabriel Senor in Hartsville, New York. Um, this is a application that's been ongoing while we referred to the Zoning Board of Appeals for several variances that we received in June. Uh, and so we're back here to finalize, uh, the subdivision. I mean, I can review the plan if you'd like, or, um, if you're, have any questions, we'd certainly happy to answer. We did receive some comments from the town consulting engineer. Um, they look, um, you know, uh, not a problem with any of the comments, I guess.
Why don't you just give us a very quick overview, uh, because it's been a little bit since you were back?
Um, yes, so it's a, uh, several years ago, we put in the Reglano Way and did several houses off of Reglano Way. Uh, they purchased the property on Water Street, um, so now we're reconfiguring the one lot on, uh, existing house, or house under construction, adding a second lot in the back of the Water Street property, and then a house that fronts on Water Street.
Good. So you're satisfied that any of those remaining comments could be picked up without?
Rick Bolander, KSCJ Consulting. Uh, the markups on the plans and the, the remaining
comments are really site plan level comments. As far as the, um, the plat goes, they did a great job of, uh, addressing our previous comments regarding the plat. Um, so it, it's in good shape. I was just really trying to quicken up the process, you know, the site plan approval process by just getting those markups out there, and, um, again, it's really just site plan level markups, no real substantive comments towards the plat. Um, I guess the one towards the plat was just include any, um, utility information in what will be the town right-of-way. We want, we want that included on the plat. That was, that was a big one, but really it, though.
So your comments get included or incorporated into the plat before it gets subdivided? Is that right, or?
Those, um, it, it, it could get incorporated. Um, it really wouldn't affect the plat. The only comment that would affect the plat, again, was just any utility information within the town right-of-way should be included on the plat.
Okay.
And some of those site planning comments will just further advance the site plan application that you'll ultimately see for the house, so that the applicant knows off the bat some things that they'll have to address.
Ready for you to pick those up? Okay. And any other comments in the memo? Actually, they've all been addressed, it seems, right?
Correct. There's, yeah, they've done a great job of addressing those.
Yes, good. And as far as, is there a SWIP, or it's been filed?
The, the SWIP calculations were included in the, on the plans.
Okay. Okay, we're good. Thank you. So then, uh, no SECR applicant comments from us? No. Any other comments on this? No. Uh, open public hearing, any comments on this application? Uh, One and Three Reglano Way? No. Um, so I make a motion to close the public hearing on application 2425, 34 Water Street, One and Three Reglano?
Second.
Great.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Phil.
You forget me.
Comments?
I do have some conditions to propose. Um, okay, so, uh, these will be conditions to be satisfied before the chairman signs the plat. Uh, the first will be, the applicant shall address the comments from KSCJ to the town consulting civil engineers' satisfaction, comments dated December 3rd, 2025. Number two, the applicant shall obtain the signatures of all their parties, other than the chairman, um, prior to submitting the plat for, uh, chairman's signature by the chairman. Number three, um, as we talked about, in the context of the SECR review, um, and the, and the recreation fee, the planning board finds that the creation of a recreation area can't be properly located on the landing, including in the plat, but the creation of one new building lot will increase the demand for recreation facilities in the town. Therefore, prior to the chairman's signature on the plat, the applicant shall pay the recreation fee for the creation of one new lot, as per Eastchester zoning law, Section 9 H2. Uh, number four, the plans show several accessory improvements on 34 Water Street that cross the boundary of the dividing line between the two lots to be, um, created. Any improvements that would not comply with the zoning laws' requirements must be removed before the chairman signs the plat, and proof of the same provided to the building inspector. Number five, a utility easement over a proposed tax lot, 65A28A, shall be provided to the board's attorney for a review prior to the chairman's signature on the plat. The utility easement, in a form acceptable to the board's attorney, shall be recorded in the Office of the Westchester County Clerk prior to or simultaneously with the filing of the plat, and a co, a copy of the easement, as recorded, shall be filed with the planning department. The applicant shall pay all recording fees. And, um, then our ongoing conditions, uh, following the filing of the subdivision plat in the Office of the Westchester County Clerk, and prior to the issuance of any building permit for a lot to be created, the applicant shall consult with the Town of Eastchester's Assessor's Office for new tax lot numbers to be, uh, assigned. And, um, number eight, this approval does not grant site plan approval for any of the lots proposed to be created. The development and improvement of all lots in the subdivision require a site plan approval, as required by Section 11 of the Eastchester zoning law.
So, you heard those? You didn't hear anything objectionable? So, subject to those conditions, whoops, wrong one. Subject to those conditions, I make a motion to approve application 2425, 34 Water Street, One and Three Reglano Way?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it, good. Thank you. You're welcome. Next application is 2571, Ten Sage Place.
Happy New Year, Happy Holidays.
Okay. Uh, good evening. My name is John Yanecito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing the owners of the subject property. Uh, we are proposing additions and alterations to the existing single-family home located at Ten Sage Place. I'll come up to the drawings there, just to go through them real quick. So the, uh, the scope of work will include a second-story addition over the existing garage, which is highlighted here in yellow. Uh, a one-story addition at the front of the residence, uh, outlined... A one-story addition at the front of the residence, outlined in red. A two-story addition at the rear and side, outlined in red here, and a new front entry portico. So here we have the existing front elevation, which is here. This is the, was the location of the original garage, which was converted to a bedroom by the prior owner without the proper permits. So we're going to bring it back to its original use and make it the garage. And then, we'll add a second-story addition above, above that garage. Here are the proposed elevations. So here's the second-story addition over the existing garage, front entrance. The one-story addition on this side of the front with a balcony, the new front portico, and then the two-story addition beyond at the side. Here is the rear elevation with the two-story addition, and then the two-story addition on the side with the addition over the garage. Here's a rendering showing the finished materials. The wall surfaces will all be stucco finish, both the existing and the new wall surfaces, in a white finish. The roof over the main portion of the house will be an asphalt shingle in a charcoal finish. The roof over the portico and the roof structure over the garage door will be a standing seam metal roof in a black finish. The trim boards at the main roof will be AZAC in a black finish. The windows will be vinyl clad in a black finish. The trim boards at the windows will be AZAC in a black finish. Trim boards and columns at the portico and the roof structure over the garage will be AZAC in a white finish. The gutters will be aluminum in a black finish. Leaders will be aluminum in a white finish. And then, the entrance door and the overhead door will be fiberglass in a black finish. The application was presented to the Architectural Review Board on November 6th, and it was approved as submitted with no additional comments. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is that third, third-story window, is that, is that an attic window?
It's an attic, yes. It's, so this, this'll have, this is going to have a cathedral ceiling in this area, and this, this is going to kind of be an overframe of the existing roof. So it's, it's not a very big attic space, but it'll be an attic space up there.
Got it.
What is the railing, that's just a fake patio or?
This here?
No, by the right-hand side?
The second story.
The second story.
That's a balcony.
It's not a?
It's accessible from?
Where?
So if we go to the floor plan, second floor plan. So it's right here in the second floor plan, accessible from this bedroom. So this will be the new, the new primary bedroom suite with the closet and bath built over the existing garage and this two-story addition at the rear. So the, this is currently a one-story addition at the back, but when we, when we investigated the foundation, it only went down about 12 inches. So we're actually going to rebuild this whole section back here, so that it has a proper foundation. And then, the rest of it will be built over the existing footprint.
And like you said, you accessed the balcony from right next to it, to the left?
From this, from this bedroom here.
Okay. Nice touch.
Is there, is there a chimney in the existing, this sort of towards the center of the existing, is that preserved?
There was a chimney back in the back corner here, which we're moving.
Removing.
And then, we're going to keep this chimney, which is the fireplace in the, in the main living room. So on the first floor, we're basically removing this entire bearing wall here and putting a steel beam here. We're also expanding the front and removing this, this exterior wall here and adding a steel beam there to expand that whole living space. It'll just be one big open great room. Kitchen, living, dining. Okay? And then, they made this, this secondary entrance here, because they have a pool in the backyard with direct access to this bathroom from the outside, so you don't have to go across through the entire house.
Very nice.
It looks great.
Good work. Comments, questions?
No further questions, yeah.
Did I open the public hearing? I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 2571 Ten Sage?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments? No comments. Motion to close the public hearing on the application, Ten Sage Place?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. And I think you're good to go, so I don't have any conditions or anything?
No conditions whatsoever.
I make a motion to approve the application, 2571 Ten Sage Place?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Next application is 254462 Brombach Avenue?
Good, good evening, Anthony Maturro of Council Sabage Law, counsel to the owner. I have with me this evening the owner Andrew Lormier and architect Thomas Boner of Thomas Merzurk's office. This is a matter involving a single-family expansion, one-story elevation of an existing one-and-a-half-story home. The expansion will go over the existing footprint. This matter appeared previously before the zoning board and variances were given, and has appeared before the Architectural Review Board. I believe you must have memos on that. Mr. Boner is here to make a brief presentation as to the extent of the expansion and available for any questions to the board.
Mr. Boner, please.
Certainly. Good evening. This is sort of a classic, built up over the existing footprint of the existing single-family dwelling on the property that's conforming. It's a 5,000-square-foot corner property. We, the hardship that we've been experiencing with this application is the fact that the existing residence is crossing over the required front yard and side yard setbacks. So with the vertical expansion, that required approval of variances. The existing one-and-a-half-story dwelling, as we've said before, will be expanded vertically to provide a second floor and then some of the usable attic space. There is a small addition, an expansion of the footprint over the existing rear porch, also visible on the driveway side. The accessory structure, one-story garage is intended to remain, and there is no changes planned for, for this structure. The other variance that we are looking, that we were seeking for and that was granted, was a slight increase in the maximum floor area of about 2,400 square feet, where 2,300 square feet were required. I will briefly describe the proposed program. The, the existing open front porch is also scheduled to remain, along with the main entrance to the house. The first floor of the dwelling will be more open. Sequence of spaces entailing a living room, dining room, kitchen, as well as the office. And centrally-located staircase will lead to the second floor. We have three bedrooms located on the second floor, along with two bathrooms, dedicated master suite. And then, the staircase continues to the usable attic space. Since we're very constrained within the footprint of the building, it's a small footprint of the house. So there was the opportunity here to pick up a little bit more of the space for the, for the, for the new owners of this, of this dwelling. Exterior elevations, drawing one, sheet Z3, this is our front elevation facing Brombach. Here's the one-story front roofed porch that remains in its original shape. The overbuild visible here, the front facade, we are falling within the, within the required building height limitations. And then, we're introducing an aesthetic dormer of the attic facing Alida Street to further enhance that elevation. The anticipated materials that were presented to Architectural Review Board are composite siding facing the street and potentially vinyl siding facing the other, on the other two building elevations. In the light colors with the dark asphalt shingle and white windows. The base of the building, the foundation wall, is intended to have either composite or natural stone. And then, the other portions of the foundation wall will be painted. The, I'm going to go back to talk a little bit of the overall square footage increase. The existing, the existing house originally was about 1,500 square feet, the proposed at 2,400, more or less. We're proposing to add about 900 square foot of livable, habitable area to this dwelling. That is, in a nutshell, the merits of this application.
Okay, and there are no variances required, right?
We, we had non-conforming conditions, which was the front yard setback and side yard setback because of the vertical expansion.
Those variances are granted.
Yes, that's right, that's right, that's right.
Is there any increase in the footprint of the building, or the previous?
The impervious coverage is not changing. I didn't mention, that's a great question. We're slightly over 50% is maximum allowed. The existing impervious coverage is at 53.8%, but we're not introducing any changes, nor the extents of driveway are not changing.
Okay. Yes, looks very good. Oh, colors and stuff, did you tell us the, what's the finishes on the Hardy Boy, the plank?
It's going to be light, off-white colors.
Off-white, which is what you showed on the, on the drawing?
We, we do have samples that were presented previously to Architectural Review Board with us, if?
But it's off-white, same as?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see that. Good, then I don't have any other questions, guys, we're good?
We're good.
We're good, don't go anywhere, just, this is an open public hearing, so, this is not yet an open public hearing, it will be. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on the application 254462 Brombach?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close the public hearing on application 254462 Brombach Avenue?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't have any other questions, very nice, thank you, congratulations. Do you have any, we're good? We don't have any conditions, just the normal?
No conditions, yeah, just the normal compliance with the plan.
Right, so make a motion to approve application 254462 Brombach Avenue?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening, Happy Holidays. The next application is 2553 For End Place?
Good evening, my name is John Carroll, I'm representing Mr. Hannah. This project, which I guess you have not seen before, involves removing the existing second floor from the house and then replacing it with a new second floor. Because at this time, the way the second floor is laid out, some of the ceiling heights are very low. So we're going to put a full eight-foot second floor, and then there will be an attic space above that. The first floor does not change at all, except that they will be installing a new kitchen in the existing space. The second, the basement doesn't change from what it is now. So the, the second floor will have three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a small office, and a walk-in closet. The existing stairs remain from the basement, and that's pretty much the new second floor. There will be an overhang on the backside of the building that's two feet past the existing rear wall. And a small overhang on the front side of the building in the master bedroom area. This is the front elevation of the building. So these windows and the door already exist, the garage already exists. So we're adding, obviously, this portion of the building with the small attic space and the new windows on both sides. The chimney will be extended to match the existing brick that's on the building now. All of the siding will be in a blue-colored hardy board. On the sides of the building, the front will be done in a shingle style, hardy board, same color as the siding on the sides. All the trim is going to be AZAC, white. The windows will be white, the shutters will be a navy blue. And I did do a sort of a cleaned-up version of the elevation, so that doesn't have writing all over it. So that's, we're going to be changing the garage doors and the front door, those doors will be in a mahogany finish. And then, the rest of it is, is that blue color.
Great. Looks good. It looks good. Is that all hand-drafted? Is that all hand-drafted?
Yeah, I'm a dinosaur.
It's pretty cool. Think you know what you're doing. The rendering too? The rendering too on the, you just put up?
This? Yeah.
Why don't you work it for me, man? Great, yeah. It's good work, yeah.
50 years of doing this, it's a long time.
Can't change the spots on the zebra or stripes. Okay, good, I don't have any questions, guys?
What's the change in the, in the square footage of the house, any?
Actually, probably 110 square feet in the end. But the thing is that, you know, the spaces in the house are so restricted by the low ceilings that?
Correct. You're not necessarily going to change the floor space, but you're going to have a lot more usable space.
Absolutely.
Okay, got it.
And somebody isn't living in a tent on the front of the building.
Alright, well done, thank you. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application, 2553 For End Place?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nothing from you guys, we're good. Close the public hearing on, on application 2553 For End Place?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No conditions, you're good to go, and I will make a motion to approve this application, 2553 For End Place?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. You're good to go.
Merry Christmas.
Congratulations. Well done, that was easy, right? As the day goes on, it gets easier. The last person is the easiest.
Well, you're not. I know.
I know, you're not, we're almost out here, thank you.
With, with a street called End Place, it really would have been appropriate for you to be the final one, but?
Pretty cool.
Can I see that?
Just wanted to see the hand-draft.
Just wanted to see the drafting.
I'd like to see your drawing too. Any drawing?
I just wanted to see a drawing.
Is that vellum or? Oh, this is a, this is a print, right.
Oh, it's a print.
You draft on vellum or, you do it on vellum or something like that, right?
Yeah, I do it on the, on the clear print.
That's very cool.
Very nice.
I just learned AutoCAD, that's all I did. Revit.
Thanks you done. Thank you.
Have a good one.
You too.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, so I, I think we should, even though we said we were going to knock it off at ten and it's ten oh two, I think we can go ahead with the last one. What do you think, guys?
Next application is twenty-five forty-three, Three Handfling Road? We're burning drinks tonight.
Probably hate my Naviswork models that I have.
Bit bad, yeah, it's pretty cool.
Good evening. Good evening, Sitch Lohman, architect for the application of Three Handfling, addition and alteration. It's existing one-family residence, it's one and a half stories. The scope of the project is to do an addition in the rear, a full two-story addition. An existing garage, which is setback, will be moved forward, shortening the driveway and creating a new front porch. It required several variances that went through the zoning board that were all approved and it was presented to the Architectural Review Board, which had no comments whatsoever. The existing house now with just a partial second floor and the proposed house with a front porch and a full second floor. The materials are a beige, a gray mist, hardy siding, white Anderson windows, a charcoal roof, some stone skirting on, on the front, about two or three feet below the windows and some AZAC columns and a portico and a roof structure over the garage. You can see all, all the sides here with the one-story addition in, in the rear. There was added impervious surface and our engineer, halt engineering prepared a stormwater and soil erosion control plan that required certain cul-de-sacs in the front yard as well as the rear yard to capture all the additional stormwater runoff per East Chester code, I think it's a twenty-five-year storm. This is kind of the materials board, you can see the gray, the actual color is light mist. The charcoal gray siding, white windows, the stone, the column, and the, the light fixture itself was also presented to the board. So that's the exact one that will be installed.
The charcoal gray roofing, right?
Roof shingles, yes.
You said siding.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Where's the stone?
I'm sorry?
The stone is just the apron in the front elevation.
It's just an apron, yeah, just in the front, only in the front.
It goes across the whole way or it's just?
Across the porch. Yeah, just across the porch, not across the garage side.
Yeah, I see, right there?
Yeah, just kind of here. Actually, and underneath here, it is landscaping, but it's, it's a nice touch, so.
Yeah, it's a nice touch. Okay, I don't have any questions, thank you, looks good. Public hearing, we'll do it anyway, I make a motion to open the public hearing on twenty-five forty-three, Three Handfling Road?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close the public hearing on the same application, Three Handfling Road?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, thank you, looks good. Make a motion to approve application, twenty-five forty-three, Three Handfling Road, as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. That's it, thank you.
Same to you. Done at ten oh six, excellent.
Good job, thank you, and I make a motion to close the planning board meeting of December fourth, two thousand and twenty-five?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Twenty twenty-five in the books.